Please rise to the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A moment of silence please. Excuse me, a moment of silence. For the election of officers, I'll adjourn the meeting over to Mr. Curry.
Thank you. As board members recall, last year we modified the organizational meeting resolution to have the election of the chairperson first and follow down the path from there. That way if the chairperson wants to run the rest of the organizational meeting, they can. Up until that person's selected, I'll run the meeting. So... So there are a series of two actions the board will be asked to take, starting with the chairperson and ending with adoption of a regular meeting schedule with several other appointments in the middle. So the first item is to elect a chairperson, and as such, I'll accept nominations for the board.
I'll nominate Ryan Wells for chair.
And I'll second him.
Any other nominations?
Discussion. I think this is what Mr. Einstein talked about many years ago, when he said that if you keep doing the same thing, it's got to give different outcomes. It has its definition.
Insanity.
Right, right. That's insanity. I'm not going to be able to support this gentleman, so please. We need to do something different.
Any further discussion?
I just want to say that I think Mr. Wells has been dedicated a large part of his life to this time, and he's made many mistakes. And I think he's been a good chairperson. I do believe this is his last year. I don't think he, I can't speak for him, but I don't think he intends to run again after this year. And I think it would be illogical to remove him from the board at this point. So I strongly recommend Roger Wells for chair.
That's qualifications for chair? Sir? Mr. Perry?
Yes, sir.
That's qualifications for chair?
I have no idea what you're talking about.
I just made a statement. You don't have to agree with it. Well, no, I just asked you a question. You made a statement. I just asked you a question.
Yeah, the answer to my question is, I believe, Mr. Wells is qualified to be the chair. That's the answer.
Based on what you said, that's the qualification for chair.
What are you talking about? Sorry. I'm not trying to be difficult, Ron, but...
But that's exactly what I said. I said that we need to do something different, and you just read the statement as if that was some sort of qualification. I just asked you if I heard that right. So I guess I did. That's the qualifications for chair.
Remember saying that? I don't think I said that.
Then what did you say, Mr. Perry?
Why don't you listen to the tape, you know, when the meeting's over and you can get down...
The public's here. I'm just asking for the benefit of the public. Is that what we just heard? That's the benefit of the people. If that's what you just said, the qualification for the chair, so that's your...
What I said is there's no reason to remove Mr. Wells from the chairmanship.
We're not removing anybody. The chair is a position that is given somebody by the rest of the members of the board.
Mr. Chairman, I could call for a question. Or Mr. Curry, call for a question. Calling for the question, so the roll call, as we always do. Mr. Frazer?
Present.
Mr. Wazinski?
Aye.
Mr. Perry?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Welsh?
Aye.
Mr. Welsh, you are the chairman. You can run the rest of this organizational meeting, or I'd be happy to do it.
He can run the meeting, Mr. Curry.
The next item on the agenda is the electing of vice chairman. And so I'll open the floor to nominations.
I'll just, if we, I'm going to nominate Christine Smith.
I'll nominate Mr. Parrish.
Is there a, before we move, is there any second to either the nomination or the vote? Second, Mr. Parrish. There being a second. Closed nominations, nomination for Mr. Parrish for vice chairman. Any discussion?
Just the same comment I had earlier, we need to do something different.
Without further discussion, roll call vote, Mr. Frazer for motion to appoint Mr. Parrish as vice chair.
Present.
Mr. Wazinski?
Aye.
Mr. Parrish?
Aye.
Smith?
Nay.
Mr. Welsh?
Aye.
I don't think I'm willing to serve as vice chair if it's not unanimous for the board. I define the vice chairmanship in second for the nomination for Christine Smith. If it's not unanimous, if I'm not, if I don't have full support of the board, I'm not going to go.
Any discussion on that?
I just wanted to be clear that my name vote was not a reflection of my opinion of you and of Mr. Parrish. It's just that, as Mr. Frazer stated, I think the board somewhat needs a fresh direction, and I'd like to be able to supply that and work to be able to make progress on some of these issues that we've been stalling.
I might have a chance.
I appreciate that.
So a motion by Mr. Frazer and a second by Mr. Parrish to elect Ms. Smith as vice chairman. There can be no further discussion. Roll call vote, Mr. Frazer.
Aye.
Mr. Wazinski?
Present.
Mr. Parrish?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Welsh?
Aye.
Ms. Smith, you're the vice chair. The next item is appointing a member to the Rappahannock Rapidan Regional Commission. Mr. Welsh, have you started on that? Mr. Welsh has served on this. County Administrator also serves on this.
And so we need to nominate you two for this?
No, I think my point is...
Well, at the risk of being repetitive, anybody have any objection if I nominate Mr. Welsh for the Rapidan Regional Commission?
Typically going to the chair.
I think Mr. Perry.
Is that motion?
Yeah.
Then I'll second.
Any discussion? Mr. Frazer?
Aye.
Wazinski?
Aye.
Parrish?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Welsh?
Aye.
Next item is to pick an appointment or election to serve as the board's representative to the Planning Commission.
I've been on that board for this past year. We've kind of rotated it around. If Ms. Smith is willing to do that, I really thought that we've got the comprehensive plan done, but for a few lack of forums and little setbacks, it's all been ready to go through, to pass. But at any rate, I feel like I did my part last year, and I'll nominate Christine Smith to be on the Planning Commission if she's willing to do that.
Second.
I can start now.
Any nominations? Any discussion?
I just wanted to say that I would enjoy the opportunity to state on that.
So on a motion to appoint Ms. Smith to as the board's representative on the Planning Commission, turn back where it speaks to Welsh?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Parrish?
Aye.
Mr. Wazinski?
Aye.
And Mr. Frazer?
Aye.
The next item is an appointment of a member of the board's zoning appeals to the Planning Commission. As you recall, the board changed the ordinance to clean up some confusion in the past and made clear that the BZA representative to the Planning Commission would be appointed annually at the organizational meeting.
I'd like to nominate Chris Bird for that. He's been on that board for several years. I know that we want to rotate that to some degree. However, as I said, we are very close to locking up the comprehensive plan. And I do think it would be unsafe to put a new horse in the team right now on that. And so he's been there all along with that, and like I say, we're really close to having it finally done. I don't want to upset the apple apart. So for that reason, I'd like to reappoint Chris Bird to that board.
I'll second.
Discussion. On several occasions, I've had to ask Mr. Bird why he doesn't even carry the county zoning ordinance with him to the Planning Commission meetings. And I think it's very important that a member of the Planning Commission at least have the zoning ordinance with him at the meetings. So if it's not important enough for the Planning Commission, remember to have his zoning ordinance with him, I don't know why we were reappointing him to the Planning Commission.
Do we have a recommendation for the BZA as to their preference for the appointment?
We do not.
Well, the last time they made a recommendation, it was for David Condon, but we don't have it currently, no.
I attended the BZA meeting. Just prior to the BZA meeting, I recommended to the chairman that they add this topic to their agenda for the most recent meeting, and that might have been too late. At the meeting, I also discussed this and kind of updated them or reminded them that the ordinance was changed, and the December meeting was the appropriate meeting for them to make a recommendation. They discussed whether they wanted to make a recommendation, and they declined to take it up at that meeting.
Well, it sounds like it may have just gotten not correctly timed for this year, so I would make a motion that we would table it until our next board supervisors' meeting.
I think you've got a motion and a second on the floor already. Yeah, I'll hold a question. So on a motion to appoint Chris Bird as the BZA representative of the Planning Commission, Mr. Frazer? Nay. Mr. Wazinski?
Aye.
Mr. Parrish?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Nay.
Mr. Welsh?
Aye.
The next item is appointment or election as the board's representative on the Rappahannock River Basin Commission. This group has a primary appointee and an alternate appointee.
I've been on that board ever since I've been on the board supervisors', and I enjoy it, but I've had enough, and I'll nominate John Wazinski for that board.
Then I'll second that nomination.
I have been the alternate in the past and would be happy to serve as the primary.
Any recommendations or appointments for the alternate if we can do them both together?
I'll nominate Mr. Parrish to be the alternate. He has experience on that board.
And then I'll second.
I wouldn't be willing to be the alternate. I just want to go to every meeting, because they're not, sometimes they're pretty far away.
To appoint Mr. Wazinski as the primary and Mr. Parrish as the alternate. Mr. Frazer? Mr. Wazinski?
Aye.
Mr. Parrish?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Welsh?
Aye.
Next item is appointments to the Public Safety Committee and the WPC, which Public Safety Committee members are automatically members of, listens to board members.
I guess I would ask if Ms. Smith and Mr. Frazer will continue to serve in that capacity. I think I've done that a couple of years ago. I don't know if you feel that you should continue on.
I would.
I would as well.
So I'll put your names forward in nomination.
I'll second that. So the few times I may say thank you.
Any discussion? Mr. Parrish?
Aye.
Mr. Wazinski?
Aye.
Mr. Frazer?
Aye.
Mr. Welsh?
Aye.
And Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Next is an appointment of a member to the Fire and Living Board.
Mr. Frazer, are you?
Apparently, no.
Would you like to continue to serve?
I can, except for Mr. Wazinski, who's been long since on the board. Mr. Wazinski's Friday coming. Mr. Bennett, sir.
Nominate Mr. Frazer to be... Nominate Mr. Frazer for the Fire and Living Board.
I've got no problem with them saying that year after year, with the risk of being subject to insanity, I second it. It may be an example of that. It really may be an example of that.
Any further discussion? Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Parrish?
Aye.
Mr. Wazinski?
Aye.
Mr. Frazer? Mr. Welsh?
Aye.
Listen right on. Next is your appointment to the Rappahannock County Northern Regional Jail Authority Board.
I'll have to put Mr. Parrish's name in nomination if he would be willing to serve again this year.
I would be willing to stay on that board.
Put that in for the motion.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? No further nominations. Mr. Welsh?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Parrish?
Aye.
Mr. Wazinski?
Aye.
And Mr. Frazer?
Aye.
Next is your appointment to the Agricultural and Forestal District's Advisory Committee. This group is likely to meet one time during the year.
Mr. Welsh, you have a desire to serve?
No, no. Mr. Parrish probably knows more about that topic than I do.
I would be willing to do it. It's not much else to work. I have had, I have had land in the Addy Park, the district, and so...
I'll nominate Mr. Parrish for board rep to the Ag and Forest District Advisory Committee.
Is there a second?
I second.
Any further nominations or discussion?
I think it's like, once in the last couple of years.
We met last year. It was a little absence or gaffe for them. There are a couple coming up in 19 that'll probably happen together. All right. Mr. Wazinski?
Aye.
Mr. Frazer?
Aye.
Mr. Welsh?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
And Mr. Parrish?
Aye.
Next is your representative to the Rappahannock County Recreational Facilities Authority.
So I've been the board supervisor representative on that board since we've had one, and that is about the hardest working board that I've seen in this county. They come up with all kinds of ideas, and they do all kinds of grants, and they've done tremendous improvements over there at the park. And I probably get more emails than that than everything else put together. And I've had mine filled, and I nominate Christine Smith for that.
Is there a second for a nomination?
Not a second, Mr. Chair. Sorry.
I was willing to serve until I heard all that. I'm very willing to serve.
Any further nominations or discussion? Mr. Parrish?
Aye.
Mr. Wazinski?
Aye.
Mr. Frazer?
Aye.
Mr. Welsh?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
And now you're represented by the Community Policy and Management Team, CPMT. This is related to the Children's Services Act.
Okay, well, I've been on that board, I think, since we've had a board representative and board supervisors on that. It's not a whole lot of work, once a month, right?
We've moved to once a month, and they back off to once every other month. Let's go a policy string.
Right. At any rate, that's the board where you get together with social services and you go over roughly thirty kids that are in the system, extremely expensive, and it's also extremely depressing to listen to these, to listen to the depravations that some of these kids go through. At any rate, I was, I would like to get off of that board and nominate John Wazinski for that.
I'll second the nomination.
Any further nominations or discussion? Mr. Frazer?
Aye.
Mr. Welsh?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Parrish?
Aye.
Mr. Wazinski?
Aye.
Last item on your agenda is, upon this set of candidates, is the point of fixing your regular meeting schedule to be the first Monday of every month in this courtroom, only to be changed pursuant to fifteen to fourteen sixteen, which requires notification in the newspaper. And it fixes the time of the meeting at two o'clock. And at the conclusion of business, scheduled for that time shall be recessed and reconvened at 7:00 PM if there's further business to conduct. That's the same language that was used last year, except that I inserted the language referencing potential change pursuant to fifteen to fourteen sixteen. Did come up a couple of times last year relative to changing venue. In addition, the chair is empowered to change the meeting due to weather, as well as identifies pursuant to fifteen to fourteen sixteen and fourteen nineteen, that during the days of the month when there's a regular, when there's a holiday on your regular meeting schedule, the meeting will be on Wednesday rather than the next day, Tuesday, due to availability of the courtroom. So if all of that is amenable to the board, I'll take a motion and second to approve that has written up in the discussion.
So move.
Second. Any discussion? Roll call, Mr. Frazer?
Aye.
Mr. Wazinski?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Perry?
Aye.
And Mr. Welsh?
Aye.
You've completed the process of your organizational meeting. Turn back over to you.
I'd like to go. I do. Next item on the agenda is the adoption of the, the adoption of the agenda.
Chairman, my intention is to amend the agenda to remove K. 3, which is a review of legal matters, and we had that item on the agenda in December. It really turned out to be nothing but a tongue-lashing session against county attorney. I don't know what we're talking about here with respect to legal matters. We have so many lawsuits, and they're all being involved in the courts, not really, or we could talk about it in closed session, but it's really not, I don't think it's a, I think it's too broad. I don't think this board needs to have that conversation out here. Frankly, I don't know which case we're talking about or what topic we're talking about.
And this doesn't, there's so many of them, and you need to have some sort of brief explanation, I think we could. And there wasn't any, what did you call it, it turned into a what?
A tongue-lashing.
A tongue-lashing. Well, unfortunately, what we had was an employee that was insubordinate to members of this board, and the board allowed it. Well, I'll probably have to make a second, I'll have to remove that from the agenda, K. 3. I think what you're all about to do, you're just going to create a situation where members of the public are going to constantly be asking for things in public comment and on social media, and it's just going to create a lot of problems. I think the best thing to do for this board, especially since we had at least two FOIA lawsuits, is to be transparent.
It's going to be discussed in the court of law, and that's where the arguments are going to take place. They're not going to, they're not going to take place at this table.
I wasn't asking for an update, I wasn't asking for an update in terms of like an in-depth analysis of legal matters. I just found it was appropriate for the board to be updated on a monthly basis in terms of the bills we're paying, what actions may have gone on, and also what upcoming court dates may be on the calendar before our next meeting, so that there's none of this back and forth that we're not all getting the same information.
Yeah, we're updating information. There's nothing on here for closed meeting today, and the last time I had something on here for closed meeting, y'all had it removed.
Well, if you're, if you're willing to qualify it as just a simple update on, on dates and when next significant events are, I'd be, I can fine with that. I just don't want to see it being used as an opportunity for, you know, any board members to express their vigorous personal opinions on these matters, much to the detriment of those that...
Vigorous personal opinions?
Are working for this, are working for this board.
Board members are elected officials, and they have certain opinions, and they ought to have an opinion for airtime.
These are lawsuits. They don't air in the court of law.
Right, but when members of this board don't know when there's certain dates that they're, they're having these venues aired in court, how are we supposed to do that?
Okay, let me drop the, let me drop the curtain on this and just, or lift the curtain on this and say, Mr. Frazer, I'm concerned about this matter because I've seen you use this, this agenda item as a way to get into argumentative discussions with the county attorney and the county administrator.
Well, okay, sir. And I have seen situations where there were days that these cases were going to court, and I didn't know, I just went and read about it in the newspapers.
As I said to Mrs. Smith, if it's just a matter of talking about court cases and dates, I'm fine with, I'm fine with that. I'm just, I just, if...
Well, how do we, how do we get to that point?
We can commit ourselves to a civil conversation on this, and I'm...
Okay, but how do we get to that point? We have an employee that doesn't give every member of this board the same information.
We could commit to a civil discussion about it and not, and not a bullying session or making over voices.
How, what is your plan to get there? I remember these one of the...
I'm going to control that, Mr. Frazer. You're in control of that.
I asked each one of the members before this meeting, what is your plan moving forward for this year? And nobody had a plan. What is your plan to exercise that? How are we going to get there?
Plan for moving forward?
For this year? What is, what is, what is, what is your individual plan? What is the board members' plan for moving this board forward this year?
In what respect?
Any respect. How are we going to get to that point that you're talking about? How are we going to get to the...
You're talking about civility?
Yeah, civility or information. How are you going to make sure that this board, each member of this board gets the same information at the same time?
Civility cuts across all issues, Mr. Frazer.
The only reason I get unsivile at times is when I am deliberately being left out of information. The only reason I get unsivile at times is when I am deliberately being left out of information as an elected official.
You can experience frustration without reason.
No, how can I, how can I properly represent my district?
Excuse me, gentlemen.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
My question.
Okay, I'll ask you this. How can I properly represent my district when I'm being left in the dark with certain information? Can you answer that question?
No, my statement is we need not argue this.
Well, I'm asking you a question. I can't ask, I can't get it from Mr. Lozinski, I'm asking you this question. As a chairman, how can you guarantee that as an elected member, whether it's me or Mr. Lozinski for that matter, how can we proceed in this new year where each member is going to get the same information at the same time so that we can properly represent our constituents?
Good question.
Oh, you're the chairman, I'm asking you. How is that going to happen?
Mr. Chairman, that's not a legal matter.
We already have a moment on the floor, we have a second.
Well, when are we going to get to that information? He wants to take it off of the agenda. I think that, that should be addressed before we vote to remove it from the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I'd be willing to modify that to say that I'm more than happy to talk about dates and when our next court dates are so that the public knows when those are. That's a simple thing and I'm not looking, I'm not looking
That's how you decide, Mr. Frazier?
Where and how are we going to do that? That's the question.
We can discuss dates under K. Three.
I think you stay on here, K. Three right now.
And as chairman, you, you will see that that happens.
I think we can do that.
So I'll end my motion, Mr. Chairman, just to say that K. Three should be in discussion on legal matters as it pertains, portends the next court dates in the various lawsuits involved, involved board or individual members.
So many questions.
We're going to handle that under the county payroll.
Okay. Thank you.
Still a question, but not far away.
Can you vote, Mr. Frazier?
Yeah, I'll second it.
So exactly what is the question?
The agenda, as I understand it, is modified to review legal matters as pertains to upcoming dates and possible expenditures.
I think my motion needs a second.
No, I second it, my second. Just for my benefit, sorry to prolong things. Mr. Lozinski, your motion was to approve the agenda as presented except for modifying K. Three as you just noted. Is that correct?
Correct. Talking about dates, court dates and building questions.
But meanwhile, I have another item that I would like to kick out with. Okay.
Can we go ahead and solve this one?
Right. Well, that has approved the agenda as amended.
So I, under L. Four, New Business Long Range Financial Planning, we are ready to, a month or two, to go into, you know, the new budget process. And I think that that would be a more appropriate time to discuss the, that would be a topic anyway, you know, to discuss the long-range financial planning. This topic's come up a number of times over the last few years and, you know, I understand that businesses that are in, in business for profit, they do long-range planning, planning, et cetera, et cetera. But I don't really think it's something that we're going to get our hands around anyway. But I think when we start talking about the budget, that would be the time to talk about our long-range financial planning. I do know just as inside that, you know, we do have big expenditures coming up with the remodeling the buildings and office space, et cetera, et cetera. And I do know that we're getting ready to have a report for the the which is going, is pretty extensive. I'm not sure if we're going to get all, you know, get down to the mid-degree, but our debt load is way down. We probably have enough cash on hand to like do away with all our debt right now if we wanted to. We're in pretty good shape. I see our county president here, thanks to her efforts and Perry's efforts. We're, I think we're in very good shape for now. It's not an emergency. I anticipate we will have to have a bond when we get this huge expense for remodeling of our building, new building or whatever, which is fine. But I do think that now is not the time to, to get into this. And I would like to remove, I would like to also have that amended for the agenda to remove L. Four.
I did want to talk about, well, I'll second your removing my request from the agenda and just say that the reason I, the reason I wanted to put it on the agenda was I actually feel very much like you do, Chris, that it's coming, you know, February, March, as we work through this budget cycle. You know, I kept thinking of last year when we completed our budget cycle and there was this big hole in our long-range financial planning and Gary had a red arrow that said, "We have a lot of work to do." And we haven't gone back and done it. And so I wanted to put a placeholder in this meeting so that as we go forth, you know, committees and authorities that we serve on, that we start taking in that information and really thinking about it now. So when we, when we do take it up in a couple of months' time.
That would be great.
You know, we have it in mind that we do need to get there. And so if you want to remove it from this agenda, that's
I appreciate that and we will have work sessions during the spring. Have plenty of time to delve into this.
That sounds good. You got it.
So. Put it on. It's all jumbled, we have two motions.
Two motions.
Number one.
I'll do Mr. Lozinski first.
I do a second. The easiest way in my mind would be for Mr. Lozinski to amend his motion relative to K. Three to encompass what you noted regarding L. Four.
So I will amend my agenda. You also asked that L. Four be removed and that you seconded that original motion.
I second that, no.
And unfortunately, Ms. Smith said
Thank you.
It's fine.
Appreciate the cooperation.
Thank you.
Now we have a motion. All of the favors say aye.
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 All of the nays. Any changes? We got a motion to approve the rest of the agenda?
I think we just took care of it all in one.
All in one, perfect. Minutes to the last meeting?
There are several sets of minutes under agenda for the November fifth meeting, November ninth meeting, continuation of the November fifth meeting and the December third meeting. I was going to hear from Mr. Frazier with the change to the December third meeting adding a sentence to page sixteen. If you have that with you, Mr. Frazier, you may read it into the record. This is a discussion regarding the, the legal update. And it was just a trailing sentence for one of the paragraphs. And I went back and reviewed the video. Mr. Goff ended by stating, "Your role is really nothing as a member because the board acts by majority vote."
Right.
Yes, that was what was on the video. I'd summarize that as, Mr. Frazier, Mr. Goff vigorously debated issues related to the Brad One case.
That's correct.
So looking for a motion and a second to approve these three sets of recent minutes.
I actually have a couple of things, Mr. Curry, small.
Okay.
The December third minutes on page nine under Broadman Committee.
Give me one second.
Sure. Okay, December third, right, page nine. Very margin, a little bit further down from half. Starts over there in the left-hand margin. Mr. Lozinski referred back to the meeting with Omni Point. That should be referred back to the meeting with All Points. Which I think is referenced further up, All Points, Broadman, instead of Omni Point. And then, same set of minutes, December third, page twenty-six, under, under the discussion about under public comment for the public hearing of Ben Denuro through truck restriction. There's a reference there to one of the speakers as Alexa Mayerson. It's Alexia Morrison. So you can just change Mayerson to Morrison of the Wakefield District. That's the last paragraph on page, the end of page.
Do you have a spell?
Morrison, like Jim Morrison in The Doors. No relation there to the campaign.
Any other suggested modifications?
Need a moment?
Are there three sets?
Are there three recent sets?
So in the
Second. Has amended.
Has amended, good.
Most may be second, all of the favors say aye.
Aye.
All of the nays.
And the next item is actually back minutes and I incorrectly informed you that you have approved all of your back minutes a few months ago. And going back through and getting everything ready to print for the minute book, I found that we had three sets that Miss Gardner passed to me that I did not pass to the board since the past week, past month, past month, or four for review. I've not heard anything back, so that's March twenty-one, twenty-sixteen, February fifteenth, twenty-seventeen, and June twenty-third, twenty-seventeen. And now I can very confidently say with these, you will have all your back minutes approved. So now that you depressed that finish line twice.
I'll make a motion to approve the set of back minutes. March twenty-one, sixteen, February fifteenth, seventeen, and June twenty-third, seventeen.
Second.
I'm abstaining from this, Mr. Frazier.
Pardon?
I'm abstaining because I was, Mr. Chair, because I was not a member of that board yet.
Right.
So we just need a voice vote.
All of the favors say aye.
Aye.
All of the nays.
I'm one abstaining.
One abstaining. Next item is public comment. This is an opportunity for anyone in the state certainly raise your hand to be recognized. Once recognized, state remain in district and direct your comments to the board.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, my name is Stephen Brooks. My wife and I are very pleased to say that we are the constituents of Ms. Smith in her very distinguished district. And I just rise to applaud the board's continuing work to adopt a standard of conduct dash code of ethics. And we look forward to progress. On behalf of the United Citizens of Ratigny, we look forward to progress at the next meeting with board. Thank you.
You need to remove Hampton District. I return to you all to repeat something I've said in the past. The mantra of my household has always been, from the words of Jeffrey K. Cho, the first U.S. forester, that you conduct yourself for the greatest good, for the greatest number, for the longest run. We have a lot of major things to go after this next year, so we are pulling ourselves into the twenty-first century. Questions about internet, EMS, fire, fire department buildings, government buildings, bringing business to this county which is compatible with it and also keeping tourism going. There are many things that are on your plates, ladies and gentlemen, and I wish you all the best this next year. Thank you.
Anyone else, anyone else here to speak?
Ron Neigl from Jackson District. I want to stand up here today and represent all the citizens, taxpayers of Ratigny County and say a few words about the legal matters that this board is dealing with. There's four suits down. There's going to be winners and losers in these suits. We don't know what that, we don't know what the winners and losers are going to be in the litigants, but we do know who the losers are in the end. It's the taxpayers. And we're tired of it. It's costing us, it's costing us a ton of money already. We're going into a budget cycle. You've got so many suits going. We're going to be looking at tax rates in order to pay the legal bills. And ninety-eight percent of us don't care. It's a waste of time, it's a waste of money. We've got, we're in a building that's deteriorating that we've got to spend a ton of money on. We know we got to do that, but these lawsuits have to stop now. And I've got a proposal that perhaps you all would consider, and this is for the taxpayers speaking to you, and that is that the taxpayers will give you permission in the Brad One lawsuit to go ahead and say yes. There was an error in our ways, we're sorry, and end it. But we don't want you to do this unless the litigants in the other suits are willing to say, "We'll drop them." Because there is no benefit to these. How many people, there's, there's a handful of people that are involved in these and the rest of the county is putting the bill. And it can't go on. And with this, with the new budget coming up, it can be handled very shortly so it doesn't get included in that new budget and we don't have to worry about our taxes going up in court or maybe stupid legal bills. And I would do something here that Mr. Welch doesn't like, but if anybody else in the room feels the same way as a taxpayer, stand up. Let these people know that we don't want this happening. Thank you.
Anyone else here to speak? One more.
Phil Irwin from Hill. The General Assembly will be meeting shortly and it seems that every time the General Assembly meets, local government loses some of its prerogatives. I would ask the board to ask our county administrator to keep an eye on the General Assembly and make sure that we have our interests as a local community represented in any decision-making process that goes on here. I question.
Over here.
Good afternoon, I'm Sheila Breszner from the Hampton District. I wrote stuff down so I don't forget. I did notice that there was no mention of the code of conduct in today's agenda, but hopefully that is being considered and that is going to be addressed within the next board meeting or so. Had been discussed several board meetings and I think it's a necessary thing that we have our school board. Our schools have a code of conduct and I think it's necessary for our government to have one as well. I have, let's consider some thoughts as we start the new year. I was talking about, there's also a mention of a review of former county in I was talking about, there's also a mention of a review of former county administrator Brenda Garten's exit review, that's apparently on the agenda, a report that I thought had been well received. In Ms. Garten described items that had been accomplished and items which she recommended be addressed with certain methods or actions. Think about this, a well-regarded report. Yet even Brenda Garten has been brought into the net of lawsuits that have only recently, in the past few years, been filed against some in our county government, after years of it running fairly well, in some people's opinion. Perfect, of course not. The era of John McCarthy apparently used a lot of finesse in getting things done, and he was able to handle the county business as it grew over the decades he was county administrator. Things were chaotic after Mr. McCarthy retired, a fairly normal condition after such a lengthy term, in my opinion. That made the time ripe for some to take advantage of that chaos and starting with endless dreams of what was wrong with practically every aspect of government. I think it was overwhelming for Giffrey Kaiser when she assumed his duties in an overcrowded, too short-staffed, and deteriorating building. I've seen reports that our county buildings are neglected and in sad need of repair. All this took place over decades. Who on our local board of supervisors has been here that long? The criticism belongs to time and can be positively addressed going forward. Since these are historical buildings, who can research possible state or federal grants that can be utilized for this expense? The fear mongering about our county citizens' taxes being raised whenever a cost for something appears is disingenuous at best. We need people willing to stop criticizing and offer solutions. Try researching available grants. Ruth Welsh is one citizen here in Rappahannock who has found grants for our county park and is an active participant in the hands-on work being done there. She could be an excellent source for contact on grants. Don't we need to stop listening to people who only say no, or we can't have, to honest growth that is critical to our viability as a county? A while back, sorry to say, there was a firestorm of criticism over businessmen who had purchased vacant buildings in Washington here and had plans to get completely to create businesses there. Johns needed, economic growth needed, possibility of modest population growth. Sadly, that was never achieved because of the negative, very vocal opposition. One person in her opposition stated incorrectly that the businessman had violated codes. He politely corrected her, explaining how and why she was wrong. Why do I mention this? The chaos our government is experiencing can be resolved in a more positive way. The past is done, leave it alone, and move on. Figure out a better way to remedy past or alleged mistakes. A side note, I had a conversation with Mr. Fraser Sunday a week ago, in which he lamented that he had not been able to hunt at all this season. That's just a small example of the quality of life being damaged by so many. Think of those others as well. In closing, I want to acknowledge, acknowledge the steadfastness of Chairman Roger Welsh. His wisdom and his sense of knowledge of our history here in our beloved county is a valuable asset that we need, among other things, so that the bright light of hope does not dim.
Anyone else? Anyone else care to speak? Public comment, close. Letter, still.
Well, happy new year, everyone, from your Panther family. I trust you all had a wonderful holiday season. We are back officially in business today as our beloved students return to us. Thank you very much. Before we went on break, you may recall that we conducted our first semester SOL testing at the high school. Scores looked very promising. In fact, for the first time ever, that I can remember anyway, our entire math department earned a 100% test grade on all first semester math courses. So all students enrolled in semester-long algebra one, algebra two, and geometry all passed their SLS. So please extend a congratulations to the RCHS math department, Scott Stevens, Sally Shackelford, Dawn Roseberry, and Mike Myers. That math department really does work together so well, and they support women others who ensure every student is succeeding. You may have been on break, but we were working diligently in the buildings on some preventative maintenance projects. Very passionate about that. High school, our 10,000 gallon holding tank was drained completely and given a complete cleaning and sanitation, which I think has been done in the life of that system, and that's something we should do regularly, and that hopefully will help with some of the sediment buildup we had at the restart of every year. Water pipe drains outside the elementary school, it's a drain from our water tanks and then also connected to our cooling tower, new cooling tower, thank you very much. We do facilities washers very regularly, and I have my people always looking for what might happen, anything strange at all. But you see, we saw some condensation in water on some of those drainage pipes, a little bit of dripping, so outside pipes freezing really scared me, so we replaced those old antiquated pipes with some newer PVC piping. And also, we found out we didn't have some shut-off safety valves that, you know, if that were to bust, that whole holding tank would completely drain and cause a lot of issues. So we put in two, so we have safety features there so we can make sure that's taken care of. Our HVAC pneumatic controls were completed over the break, so we're very excited about that. So now there's seamless switching between our boiler use and the AC units, and now all of our systems are now talking to one another, so the sensors aren't being run up. We do have just about every system we can think of, but now they're all working in conjunction with one another. Very helpful. All our gutters were cleaned out, and our custodians really took care of some buildings and grounds, pretty shiny and ready for the students to come back, so we're very proud of that. As I'm sure you're very well aware, since our last meeting, Governor Northam's office notified us that we were awarded the Virginia Early Childhood Foundation grant for our first step collaboration. And that will ensure that all students, especially those identified as at risk, were offered a spot in high-quality early childhood educational preschool programs with wraparound supports and services. This grant was awarded in full, giving Rappahannock County public schools $250,000 over the course of a two-and-a-half-year period to partner with CCLC, DSS, as well as 23 other community organizations in the county. We have since attended our first grant systems management webinar and are thrilled to be working together on such a worthy cause. The community support that we received and also the support from you, the board of supervisors, no doubt strengthened our eligibility and application, which ultimately led the foundation to award Rappahannock the grade. In the meantime, plans are in place to work toward regaining our head start funding from the federal government and to be sure that we are able to maintain these services for our neediest families. So thank you so much again for supporting that effort. We are in the planning process of scheduling a very special school safety summit for parents and students in grades six through 12. This summit is tentatively scheduled for the evening of February 20. Our CPS in partnership with the Sheriff's Office is holding this summit to educate families on three hot topics that we've identified in school safety. The event will start with a keynote address from a local expert on digital ethics, Joe Shoker. He will outline the dangers of social media and cellphone use among our youth, as well as important safety tips to ensure digital devices are utilized with a strong code of ethics. I like to tell my students, that's that digital dossier of dumbness that will follow you for the rest of your life. So we try to instill that sense of ethics in our, in our students. Following the keynote, two concurrent sections are planned. First, a seminar on vaping and substance abuse to help parents and students understand the dangers associated with each of these, as well as tips for safeguarding the home against this use. And the second will be a special modified ALICE training designed for older students and their parents, if they so choose, to teach lifesaving techniques in the case of an active shooter event. This training will require special parent permission and a signed waiver to participate. It is very difficult, but as we've seen, like in the bus accidents, sometimes the students are the ones who, if they're empowered, can take control of the situation and save a lot of lives, and we want to share this information if they choose to be a part of that. More information will be forthcoming on this summit as we finalize our speakers and locations. We hope to provide food and babysitting to encourage as many parents and students as possible, and hopefully it is in February, so hopefully the weather doesn't mess with that. Finally, we have some upcoming events that you may be interested in. Our Scholastic Bowl team host Central Clark and George Mason tonight at 5:00 at RCHS. Because of the team's stellar performance so far, they have earned a spot in the national tournament in Chicago this spring. So this team will plan on doing some fundraising to support registration and travel for the tournament. One of the events that is being discussed is a community quiz bowl tournament. So Mr. Nazar and his team will be looking for community teams to compete, which should be a lot of fun. More information will come on that soon. Middle school boys and girls basketball host Peter Mullenberg Middle School tomorrow night, beginning at 4:30 in the high school gym. Girls JV varsity basketball hosts Madison County Wednesday night, starting at 6:00 at the high school. And then they're home again on Friday, beginning at 6:00, hosting Central. Tomorrow night is the school board meeting. It's unusual that the first Monday and the second Tuesday are the same week, so busy week. So at that school board meeting, I will be starting the budget process for the school board, beginning with an overview of Governor Northam's proposed budget and that local impact. If you see in the release for this proposal, the governor has allocated quite a lot of additional funds for K-12 education. So that includes a 5% biennium increase for the teachers. So this is the second part of that biennium. So remember, we did a 2% last year, under the mandate of 3% in the biennium, and if up to that to the 5%, then we'd be mandated for a 3% increase for this, this time. So we'll be watching that closely. Additional funding for supporting special education, English as a second language, guidance counselor positions, as well as additional funding for preschool programs, particularly those funded by the mixed delivery program that we just received that grant. So we'll be looking for another announcement to bolster those programs as well. But as you know, there's always changes as that goes through the General Assembly, and each of the finance committees gets a hold of the governor's proposal, so we'll stay on top of that and see what the local impact of that will be. We plan to work through a very similar process of last year, complete with another report justifying the budget of need that we proposed, and we're going to use some, a new program that we have called ALEVIEW, that hopefully outline and be more analytical with some of the spending that happens tied to our goals. And we've also added the community survey component. There's always competing priorities, but it's always helpful to know what the community views as the most important, pressing needs in schools. These results will also be part of that justification report that we will release as we get closer to approval time. So as always, thank you so much for your support of the public schools. We couldn't do what we do without you. Thank you very much. Do you have any questions for me?
Did you repeat, did you repeat over?
How much time we got? Quiz bowl at 5:00, we have to get out of here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Shannon, I think I can't remember if it was December or November, but you've come to us recently, wondering about rental space or space available for counseling services. Is that something you all are still working for?
Yes, that's really, yes.
Okay. I have a few ideas, so I'll send you one.
Please do.
Great, very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is presentation of the FY 1718 Annual Audit Conference and Financial Report by Josh Roller with our colleague Robinson Barman, who's here. Each of you have a book at your spot. It tends to get thicker every single year.
All right, good afternoon, and as Mr. Curry just stated, my name is Josh Roller. I'm with Robinson Barman, the Charlotte's Hall office. In the audit report in front of you, in the front cover, there should be a letter. This is the standard letter communication with those charged with governance. I'll just point your attention to a few parts of this letter. If you make your way about halfway down the page, the second paragraph under significant audit matters, talks about accounting estimates are an integral part of the financial statements, and that states the two largest estimates for the financials, which have to do with capitalized set useful lives, which drive the depreciation expense, and also the estimate of items related to pension liability and the other post-apartment benefit liability. The other post-apartment benefit liability is, the main reason the report is about 25, 30 pages longer this year than it has been prior to years. This is related to Gatsby 75, which I'll talk about a little bit farther into the report. The very last sentence of first page there, we encountered difficulties with dealing with management during our audit. And on to the second page, we had no disagreement with management on any accounting reporting or auditing matters throughout our audit process. The third paragraph down on the second page, their management representation. Part of the audit process is getting a management representation letter. The main purpose of this is for management to claim responsibility of the actual financial statements, and we are just expressing an opinion on those financials. From there, we can actually get into the report. And I will just point your attention to a few parts of the report, and then any questions that come up, feel free to stop me at any time or wait to that, if you'd like to. The first page that I'll point your attention to is page one. This is our opinion on the financials. We have issues that are unqualified or an unmodified opinion. This is a clean opinion, the best opinion that we can give of all. Looking forward, few pages there, pages four, five, and six, these are your entity-wide financial statements. These show your fund statements, so it also includes your long-term assets, long-term liabilities, so your debt, debt capital assets, and also items related to the pension liability, also the liability this year. Usually, the more beneficial set of financial statements is here before, maybe the fund financial statements, specifically exhibit three and exhibit five. This is your governmental fund balance sheet and your governmental fund statement parameters, expenditures, and change of fund balance, or in simpler terms, your income statement. Page 12 is the start of the flip notes. This just gives a lot more detailed explanation of all the different numbers that go into the financial statements. Usually, a good, on note eight, page 20, excuse me, page, yes. Page 28 is your long-term obligations. This shows your beginning and ending, long-term debt and other long-term liabilities, which is your net pension liability, overhead liability, crude landfill costs as well. The next page I'll flip over to is page 89. And this is the, this talks about the adoption of the accounting policies, this is the adoption of Gatsby 75 this year, which is very similar to a few years ago with Gatsby 68, you were required to record a net pension liability for your share of the pension liability of the whole PRS system. This is the same idea of that, and as part of that, there was, it had to be beginning balance, beginning deposition restatements, which are down there in the bottom. And this is what brought the primary government and also the school board to effect as well. And this is, every county in the state is going to have the same, similar restatement of deposition. Looking forward, page 122 is the start of the stat tables. This gives some more comparative numbers showing the last 10 years worth of numbers to kind of pick up on trends. And the last couple pages I'll look forward to on page 135. This is our independent auditor's report on internal control with relation to governmental audit standards. This is where we found no deficiencies in internal control or material weaknesses in internal control this year. This is also where, we also found no issues of noncompliance with relation to the state of Virginia audit or public account, audit specs. Page 137 is our report on the Uniform Guidance Compliance Requirements. Uniform Guidance is what governs the federal compliance of the county. And rolling right into the next page there, 139 and 140 show the breakdown of federal expenditures for this year, broken out by different programs. expenditures for this year, broken out by different programs. And at that point, that's my very abbreviated summary of the report there. And I'll have to, happily, put in questions as it comes.
Josh, I only have one question. In looking at page 125, it's table two under general revenues. Let me get there.
Okay.
The column of miscellaneous ranges anywhere from, well, as low as $13,000 up to $236,000 over the course of 10 years. I guess it was, what, FY '18? It's 1.26 million. You have, I'm just kind of curious to, there's such a pot there. Is that just collection efforts?
Yeah, that caught my eye as well.
Is that collection efforts of back taxes for revenue?
So what that, the main driver, if not the whole purpose, that is a million dollars, about more than average there, is if you look on exhibit five, back on page nine, the table two is your governmental revenues, which is your general fund, your library fund, and also the EMT fund. And on page nine there, exhibit five, under the library, there's miscellaneous of $1,024,793.
Right.
And that was, I believe, I don't have exact detail, but there was a large donation to the library this year.
Yes. Okay, thank you. That answers my question?
While you're down there, I'd just like to point out a couple of things on this 10-year trend. Our interest on debt looks like it's gone from 200,000 to 70,000. That's on page 123. And I mentioned earlier that for our capital improvements, we may have to put up bond. And this kind of shows that we're in a good position to do that, because we pretty much got our interest on debt knocked down, as I say, from 200,000 to 70,000. The other thing I had mentioned earlier, the pressing thing, was about the health and welfare. And that's gone up an entire billion dollars in that period of time. So it's just stuff that we're dealing with in this county right now. And everything else, I mean, education and the government administration and all, has been fairly, a lot of increases. So I just wanted to point that out while you were there. I'm sure I wasn't reading it wrong.
You are reading it correct.
So part of state code to have your auditor present this to you, and then do I have to confirm to the state that he didn't in fact do that? So this is all part of the process, the end of the process, pretty much? Trade all the home and read it?
Got a trouble sleeping, that's a good doctor. Dead is very multiple times. I actually believe that.
Thank you all for having me. Mark?
This is walking up. Mark and I discussed trying to get him back on track to a quarterly visit here, and so this is what he proposed January, and it's heading on down the line.
Thank you, Chairman, and the board members. Appreciate the opportunity to be here. I hope you're having a nice holiday. Everyone should have a copy of the most recent report for December. As we all know, it's been a quite a wet year, and currently, most of our construction projects are on hold due to a little weather. The bridge project on 211 is proceeding according to schedule, and we are looking to for that project being completed, probably slightly ahead of schedule. So that would be good to get that traffic pattern back in, back in order here in the We get received from the county the request to review in the new road, 279, re-truck restriction, and our traffic in Duke section is currently doing a traffic study. Understand it will be, should be ready in the next two to three weeks, so I'll report back to Mr. Curry, you know, on the results of that, and we'll go from there. We did have, we were prepared to put some signage of recommending trucks use alternate route 5.2 to, instead of route 729, but we put down a whole engine account, true truck restriction possible.
Are those kickable offenses?
What's that?
I'm sorry, interrupting. Are those kickable offenses, alternate truck routes?
Are they one of them?
Kickable offenses?
Yes. The true truck, yeah, what you're requesting is the other signs for direction, recommendations of.
Recommended?
Yeah, recommended. We have those on some other routes where they didn't qualify for the true truck restriction. Felt like that the recommended signs would help, maybe reduce some of the issues with the trucks.
When we put alternate truck routes, when they're restricted, restricted truck routes, those are kickable offenses?
Those are, yeah, those are enforceable by law. And, yeah, those are.
One of the things that was included in the reservation report passes that you would use your good powers of enforcement to the sheriff's office to enforce it.
Yeah, I'm afraid that we have to do as much time as we can, because once they go up there, once they become kickable, I think they come under the retrostrapping statutes of saying to obey post-pow laws. So we have to have as much time as available.
And force the burden is to determine, to ensure that they were attached to three trucks and not trucks that were, you know, generated, that trips were generated within that quarter. But I said I would communicate back with the results of that as soon as they're available. Other than that, you know, we have been dealing a lot, like I said, with the rainy season. Spending most of our time going from gravel road to gravel road, maintaining, repairing, maintaining traffic roads as best we can. We have had some turnover in our local area headquarters. Our superintendent has gone to warranty area headquarters, and we've recently had a longtime employee supervisor retire with 40-plus years of service. And so we're in the process of sort of positions, I feel like, in the next, within the next month, we should have him off, so he'll be back up and speaking. But I'm willing to answer any questions the board may have.
Mark, I noticed, and I'm sure you all have too, that most of these ditches, all this rain, are full of debris, branches, leaves, and all kinds of stuff. So when it rains, it just comes on out into road, and then being winter time, you know, it's going to freeze, and it's going to be slick and black ice. So I'm thinking that that's something that needs to be addressed, ditching more than anything, and I'm sure you all know that. The other thing, I actually called you, I don't know if you got my message, about these little ripple things in the middle of the road. And they are really noisy, and people complain that, you know, it happens all night long when they're trying to sleep, and somebody eases over on the middle of the road and all this noise occurs. And so I noticed that on 729, for example, it stops at the Colton County line, and then so far, we don't have, at least on that road in Appahann County, I noticed something down on 231. At any rate, I personally would like to see you all leave the middle of the road alone. I mean, I know it's, the purpose is to keep somebody on their side of the road, but there really is, you know, what you got in there, you know, the middle road is a pretty narrow distance over to that ditch with no shoulder. And so I don't, I question that the possible, you know, impediment to danger that these things would help with are not worth it, you know? I don't, I hate to say that if somebody had an accident, but at any rate, I would encourage you all to consider not putting those ripples in the middle of roads in this county as much as possible.
I understand the concerns. We have also received, you know, in other counties, complaints about the noise. And we do have, the rumble strips have been installed for quite some time on Route 211 and going up the mountain.
But that's a wider road.
Yeah, and on 522.
You get to curvy roads, and you know, obviously, if nobody's coming, they're going like across the middle of the road.
And they have shown overtime to reduce runoff of road crashes and the head-on type crashes. But we will, you know, look very closely if we get more. But right now, we don't have the funds to put any more in Repahann County, but if we, if it looks like we're going to have funds and opportunity to, we'll look at it very closely and outwardly with you, with the board on that.
Thank you.
Mark, I want to thank you for taking care of some of those things that we highlighted on Hurst Road and the small mountain road. And I guess you've got some new signage on 211 as you approach 727 and the new road. So I appreciate that, too. Hopefully, that'll make a difference. That's a tough, and 211, 211, 729, that's a, that's a tough intersection there. Hopefully, that'll make a difference.
We'll keep our eye on it, and we'll keep communicating on it if we need to do the more we can reassess it.
Thank you. Any update on the schedule for the 231, 522 intersection?
We're probably not going to have the funds this year to do that, but we're looking at, you know, the design, it's kind of a planned project. We'll basically work within the road while we can. Hopefully, we'll make that wide type intersection and pretty good standard intersection. That most likely will be in the summer of 2020.
And I see here in town, the asphalt's marked, so I've seen the contractors out measuring for resurfacing.
Yeah, for this construction season, we will be resurfacing the rest of the secondary roads in the town.
Thank you.
First, let me say there's a slightly revised report uploaded this morning. There's a minor correction missing and modified. So I probably wouldn't have put it up if not for wanting to look back at the reports of the year from now, making sure they're correct, most updated version was on board docs. So this chart that I've shared with the board multiple times really tells the whole story of the big picture, and that you can see, this is your cash balance, all funds. And we're at the high point of cash. Does that make sense? They're going to just pay their taxes, and those are your big flux of revenues, your real estate, personal property tax. And then it'll be this slow trail downward as we pay expenses against that revenue till next September, August, September, when we'll hit the next valley. So that line is tracking above FY '18, which is generally good. Every year, at the end of the year, June 30th, that's when you'll kind of compare that cash, well, not exactly, to the fund balance. It's listed in your financial report. As we go into the budget season, we'll be talking about this low part of cash in August and September, and having discussions about how much revenue, cash, may be available to invest into projects, recognizing that you have a buffer at that little period. So you could swipe some of that cash and reinvest it into local projects in a Pago way rather than borrowing or something. So I like that chart, and hopefully you find it beneficial. Overall, revenue is looking very good. The tax collection season was good. We're, I believe, about 75% collected on revenue for the year. That's similar to past years, and we're, I believe, 94, 95% collected on real estate. It's very good for this time of year. Houston Lake has also been very successful in delinquent, and so those are some of the other reasons why you see your cash going high, because they're not going in. Expanders in the core are what would be expected, and they make a little more sense this month because of the amended budget last month, where you picked up some of the carryovers that were left from '18 into '19. So some of those percentages that didn't look right in the past, for example, zoning, we purchased a new vehicle, those are now, now look right. Looking through that, everything's pretty much in order, a couple of minor things, but nothing really concerning right now. With that, I'm happy to answer any particular questions you may have. And as we talked about in the past meeting, this is something that could potentially be included in the consent agenda in the future if the world can make a stop to it. Next on the agenda is your accounts payable. You'll see that there are a number of accounts payable listed this month. The mid-month total, December 17th, is $13,156.99. That's actually comprised of three separate check runs. We did the mid-month check run, identified a payment for health benefits that needed to be run, so we ran that. And then we got word that there was a late, a credit card bill that needed to be run, and so we did that. One of the things I want to point out is that since your last meeting, the policy that was approved by Resolution Board relative to mid-month has been enacted. And now in the board package for this meeting and in the other meeting, will be this policy pre-ten form A, which is a listing of all of the vendors that have been approved for payment mid-month. And that approval process pursuant to the resolution of the policy is upon my recommendation and approval by the chair. So if the name's not listed on this form, it shouldn't be in the mid-month payment. We can run mid-month anytime during the month, but it's a bit of a hassle to run the check runs, so we'd rather just do it once when we can. With that, the second payable is for today, $619,312. Those checks are sitting behind me and not been signed. They include two checks related to ongoing litigation, one for Walker Jones and one for Offit Kermin. Both of those, as we've discussed in the past, may require disclosure pursuant to Conflict Interest Act. I have provided the sheet in front of you, each of your spots, and I've highlighted a portion in red that's been emphasized recently in one of the court cases, in that even if you file the written form in my office, you should still make a public notification in general during the meeting. It's my recommendation that it's just easier to make the statement for the minutes in detail, and we can put it in the minutes, and we don't have to worry about doing both. But I'll leave that to your discretion.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, in response to one paragraph in our email back to Mr. Goff from Mr. Stuart Peetup and the Troya Council, dated 23 August 2017, this board was all copied on it. He says, "In short, it is permissible, if not a violation of Troya, for the board to authorize the use of litigation funds from Troya Council to represent the board members who were individually sued. The board may authorize, the board may also authorize the use of litigation funds from Troya Council to represent the board in such counsel separate." Then he closes that paragraph. He says, "This may even include the other board members who are also not being sued in their personal capacity, depending on the compensation they receive as members of the board." He did not elaborate on what that meant, so I am now taking that apart, and I am making that declaration that since we are voting on calling Walker Jones to represent the board in the body, I'm making that oral declaration here also.
So can you explain why you hired an outside counsel?
We are using the aviation fund, which references 152, it's 152, 152, which is referencing the resolutions that this board adopted. resolutions that this board adopted. And I told the gentleman, ladies and gentlemen, that last month. And y'all didn't have a problem with that. And I don't understand why you have a problem with that. Now, if you read the statute, which is one of the biggest problems why this board continues to find itself in litigation is you don't read the statutes. If you read the statute, there's, I think it's 17 orders in that one statute. It says, and I have that here. Do you want me to read that?
No, my question is, why did you seek another attorney?
I don't have a permit. I can't get legal, I can't get legal counsel anywhere as a member of this board right now.
Well, how did you have a $200 bill?
I discussed the problems that I'm having as a member of this board in that FOIA lawsuit with legal counsel.
Well, when I, when I, Mr. Fraser presented this last month, that he may seek to have litigation fund cover some of his private legal expenses. Not private legal expenses too, by the way, to the $21500. So that'd be kind of nice in the woman case, absolutely. I asked the county attorney to run an opinion, which I think has been circulated to all board members. And the opinion of the county attorney is that Mr. Fraser is not a defendant. And as he's not being sued for anything, he's not a defendant in any case. That litigation fund shouldn't be able to be used for payment purposes.
If I can, if I can have it, this is second 1520 does not say anything about defendant exclusively. And Mr. Goff's opinion is not really legal opinion. It starts out, he is asked a question by someone. It's this question presented, and I'm not sure. I guess it was Mr. Gesinski.
I asked his opinion, yes.
And Mr. Goff says, "State and effect." And he goes out, and he has several paragraphs with "state and effects." He says, "I'm still the guest of the county." He goes on to explain this FOIA suit. And then he has a couple of paragraphs. And he comes down here and he says, talking about this, the technical question that was, where the court, Judge Sworzy rejected the case back in March of 2017. And he states that it was a highly technical case that I overstated the significance of it. And I didn't overstate the significance of it. I think what it is, is Mr. Goff is understating the significance of what the high court said in Richmond. I was the only supervisor that was there, Mr. Chairman. I was the only supervisor that went to Richmond. I sat behind Mr. Goff and Mr. Luke that day. And if y'all would listen to the high court as they basically shredded the defense that Mr. Leinhardt made, and they congratulated him at the end and said, "You had a tough case, but you did a good job." But they, none of them agreed with him. And the thing is, the thing is, Mr. Goff has overstated that. And then he goes on to say here in his so-called facts, he says that I have went on to say that as an individual supervisor, I am trying to say that I have, that I'm supposed to have some sort of say in this case. But I'm not making, I've never made that case. I'm trying to make the case that this board is a body. And we're not having any say in this case as a body. Even when this board, Mr. Chairman, you voted with Ms. Smith and I to seek terms of settlement, this board has been sheltered from any knowledge of what's going on. Therefore, the public has had no knowledge of what's going on. It seems like the individual respondents are running this lawsuit outside of public meetings. And even when we had a vote to instruct the county attorney what to do, that our instructions were superseded by something outside of this meeting. And as a member of this board, I can get no information and I can get no legal opinion. I, as a board member, was subpoenaed for information that I would have on my home computer or whatever. And that is an insult. The inference this gentleman made to me as a board member was that the reason they subpoenaed me is that that information had to be given to them under oath, as if I might lie about something. And that is, that is an insult.
We're actually not going to have accounts.
No, no, wait a minute now. We're getting to the, to the, to the subject of this so-called legal opinion. And then Mr. Goff moves on to act as if this is some kind of legal opinion. He says, he concludes that the county attorneys are incompetent and insubordinate. Well, they are insubordinate. And that is not a legal opinion to put that in here. That has nothing to do about whether I can use 1520 or not, Mr. Chairman.
Why would you have a precedent of this? I mean, I've been, I've been.
There is no precedent for 1520.
No, I mean, let's say I wanted to go out and just hire a lawyer.
No, I'm not, I didn't go out and hire a lawyer.
Litigation fund and say, you know, I would feel my better, I mean, I think the proper way is to come to the board first and say, I want to use this for this purpose. And can I have permission for the board to use a litigation fund?
Mr. Parrish, I did do that.
What's stopping any of us? If this is okay, what's stopping any of us just going out and hiring separate counsel and charging the county?
But Mr. Parrish, I did do that. And it is related to the FOIA suit. It's not related to a boundary adjustment with the property owner I have next to me. This is related to county business.
But you removed yourself as an individual, Mr. Fraser, and therefore removing yourself as an individual from the Brad 1 suit, which is what the county attorney is referencing.
I did not. I just agreed that what he had said was improper.
You said you didn't walk through your assistance. So you're the deputy county.
They interrupted. I did not remove myself from the suit. I just agreed what we did was improper. I did not remove myself from the suit. And the thing is, if y'all would listen to what the Supreme Court justices said during that oral argument, they agreed that, they agreed that what they listened to on, and what they watched in those videos of this board, what we did was improper. If y'all would listen to the audio recorded.
And Mr. Fraser, I listened to that audio from your suggestion. And what I got out of it is Mr. Conick told the judges that the information and belief that he got to create the lawsuit, he got from Mr. Fraser.
No, he didn't get that from me.
As we said, listen to the tape.
If you listen to what Justice Smith said, he said, "If you watch the videos over and over and over again," that's the way he said it.
That's something different.
No, he, he didn't.
No, I'm saying it was a direct, a direct quote from Mr. Conick telling the Supreme Court judges.
But you didn't listen to it completely, sir.
So you used to accuse somebody of interrupting you. I think that's really.
No, but they're trying to call me a liar.
No, I'm not calling you a liar.
Justice Smith said, "If you watch the videos." Mr. Chairman.
Yes, quiet.
The Justice, Justice Smith said, "If you watch the videos over and over and over again, this body violated FOIA."
That's not true, Mr. Fraser. We haven't even heard the lawsuit.
Justice Smith said that.
That was a procedural matter.
Justice Smith said that. Why would, why would?
Why are we still going to court then?
Why would a Supreme Court judge say that?
It was a procedural matter.
Why would a Supreme Court judge say?
Because it was a procedural matter. And that's how we reviewed it. That's how he.
All right. Well, we're back to this. We're back to this. Why would the county attorney say something that's not true?
I wanted to strike K3 from the agenda, Mr. Chairman. I knew we were going to go down.
No, we're talking about this right here. Why would the county attorney say something that's not true?
We're out of order. We're out of order. Well, sir, you need to bring yourself in order.
What are we talking about?
I was like, God, you know.
No, we're talking about why the county attorney wrote something that's not proper.
First thing, I don't think you have to shout to get your point across. Once you made a point, you don't have to make it 10 more times.
No, sir, you're not acknowledging that you made a point.
Oh, I don't think so either.
Why did the county attorney write something that's not true or incorrect?
That's not what we're discussing.
It's not my opinion. It's right here. It's in black and white. He wrote something that's incorrect.
That's your opinion.
It's not my opinion. He wrote it.
It's the opinion of a county attorney.
I think just to, just to go back to the beginning of how all of the legal representation lined up, you know, that's what's originated this issue, was that originally, you know, the county attorney represented the board.
All right.
And then the board.
Will this stop right here?
And then the board voted to empower the county attorney to represent the individual respondents. And for a long time, the individual respondents and this board moved down the road together in unison and were working hand in glove. And that was fine until last July, when we had a vote of this board to seek settlement terms. And at that point, the board and the individual respondents who did not want to seek settlement terms and have expressed no interest in settling had a parting of the ways. And so I believe we are incurring these bills and continue to have these problems because as we started to discuss at the last meeting, but unfortunately never seemed to get anywhere, we have a conflict between the path that this board has voted to take and the path of the individual respondents. And I don't say that with acrimony. And I don't say that to cause a problem. I say that because I feel like I felt at the last meeting, that we should have clarity as to who is representing whom in these matters, so that we can move forward on different tracks without these constant clashes over our own interests. And that is, that's all I have to say about it. I have no issue paying these bills because we have created this problem.
Actually, Mrs. Smith, the fork in the road was not whether or not one group wanted to settle and another group didn't want to settle. The fork in the road was one member of this board pleading guilty and deciding that he was going to go off on his own and then retain his own counsel. And so what you're saying, if you're going to go that way, is that you're setting a precedent that if any board member wanted to just go off on their own and seek their own counsel, that the taxpayers of Rappahannock County would have to pay that individual's legal bills. And I personally don't think, but, I'm sorry, let me just finish by saying, in the county attorney's opinion letter, he said that we may approve these, the governing body may approve these by a majority vote. That's what, you know, so if the majority of this board wants to recognize that individuals can go out and hire their own counsel at the cost to the Rappahannock County taxpayer, then we're empowered to do that. And that's, that's the vote that's before us here. And I would make the motion to pay the bills with the carve-out of the bill to the private law firm that Mr. Fraser has retained for the amount of $200, because I think it sets a bad precedent, a wrong precedent.
Let me ask a question. Let me ask a question. If this board, if the board, the individual respondents, which is the majority, if they lose in court, are you willing to repay the taxpayers?
I wonder if the plaintiffs are willing to repay the taxpayers if we're found to be not guilty.
I don't know. I'm just.
No, that's a question that I have. Everybody's saying, you know, I read it on Rappahannock all the time. You guys need to pay the legal fees back to the taxpayers if you lose. Oh, really? Is the plaintiff going to refund the taxpayers if it turns out that we did nothing wrong?
That would be what you would call a.
Quick pro quo.
We have a motion. Do we have a session?
Well, wait, Mr. Chairman, I have a question. For the gentleman, he just asked to carve out. I do owe $200 for legal advice. And I just asked a question, and that pertains to you, too. Would you be willing to repay the taxpayers, all these thousands of dollars, if you're wrong?
Well, I don't know. But if I was selling tickets out front, I think I'd do a really good job.
Now, I ask you a legitimate question. If I don't qualify to have legal counsel in this matter, and y'all are found to be wrong, and I'm right, if I read the statute right, if Judge Sworzy read the statute right, if Judge Parker reads the statute the same way I do, if the Supreme Court reads the statute the same way I did, and y'all are wrong, and your counsel is wrong, which it appears he is, are you willing to pay the taxpayer back?
I would say that you'd better talk to Mrs. Bragg and Mr. Wolman about that before you make that bet. And you're making a bet right here in this court.
That's not a bet. I just asked you a question. Would you be willing? You're the one making the bet.
No, actually, I would not be willing because, because.
You're betting with the taxpayers' money.
No, I'm not betting with the taxpayers' money. I was sued. I'm a defendant. And that's what the litigation fund is for. The litigation fund is for defending yourself in the case of a lawsuit, not when you're suing somebody else.
We should be defending the county. What is the proper way, what is the proper way for the county in this? What is the county's position? Not you, not you, not you, Mr. Parrish. What is the county's position?
We are the county, Mr. Fraser.
No, you're not. You're an individual. What is?
I represent the county.
No, right now you've been representing.
Now, you're an individual going off and hiring your own counsel.
No, because I believe y'all are wrong.
But there you go. There you go. And you've made that decision. And you're going to pay your own legal fees because you made that decision to do that on your own.
Well, this can only end bad for you guys if you're wrong.
Well, it could add very, and very badly for you.
Because the thing is, the thing is, if you're depriving me of, what you're trying to do is deprive me of equal representation. You're using the taxpayer funds to give yourself legal representation, even though you may be wrong. You're trying to, you're trying to deprive me of the same thing.
Mr. Fraser, we are empowered elected officials by this county. And they can remove us next November if they so, or whatever November, if they so, if they so choose. Until such time, we are empowered and are, and are powered by all of the laws.
You're saying that you're going to take advantage, you're going to take advantage of that.
Mr. Fraser, you're acting as if I dropped the lawsuit. You know, people get up here and say, you stopped this and you settled. I didn't settle anybody.
No, no, no. I'm saying that what you're doing is taking advantage of the fact that you have the ability to deprive me of due process.
Your choice to get your own individual attorney. It was your choice to go out and hire somebody else.
But I may be right.
May I ask a quick question?
Yes.
Mr. Frasier, what was your, what was your vote when it came time? And that, I believe this preceded my time on the board, to have the county attorney cover the individual respondents? Did you vote in favor of that?
I voted in favor of it.
Then I think we should cover that one.
But then he withdrew from that. Come on. I mean, there's a, there's an affidavit that he signed that said, "I no longer want to be part of this lawsuit."
So this particular litigation, you're still being covered as an individual because the county attorney is representing them.
Well, it's a bad precedent.
I think if one of us needs second law.
I think it was maybe a bad precedent.
No, wait a minute. But I have another question about these invoices before we go to covering them. So your, your motion is there.
My question, yes, sir.
Mr. Goff, when we approved Mr. Brown and Mr. Luke to help you in these cases, you said that you needed some additional help with the murder trial. But there's no murder trial. And yet now, Mr. Brown seems to be knocking down $4,000 to $5,000 a month on Drag 1. What's going on here?
Well, I don't think it was exclusively because of the murder trial. I wanted.
No, that's what you, you said, that you said it was a workload issue. And there has been a murder trial for a couple of months now.
I answered your question. It wasn't exclusively because of that, so.
Well, that's what you said. You said it was a workload issue.
Okay. You know, I think everybody understood that it's a whole lot more than that.
So, no, I don't think everybody understood. We went by what you said, sir.
I'm not arguing with that.
But no, you work for the board. And I think we have a right to question why you needed additional help.
Mr. Chairman, answer the question.
Mr. Chairman, he didn't exit sufficiently from me.
Well, that's a snapshot in pride, Mr. Fraser, that three more lawsuits.
He's not working on all of those lawsuits. The insurance companies have had at least one of them.
Anyway, I think it's a bad precedent. Nothing against you, Ron. Pass that down, Ron.
I will not.
No, take this one. I don't, do not want you to be in comfort by your own, you know, I'm perfectly willing to help you out on that. But I'm not going to let the county money go toward this because I think it's a bad precedent. I'm serious.
Parrish, don't do that. Whether it's $2 or $200, it's a precedent in that.
Give that to the lawyer.
Keep billing them, Ron. Keep billing them.
So I'll go ahead and second the motion.
Well, pass it around to Dowd. See if anybody wants this. Put Mr. Fraser's legal defense fund here.
You guys have made plenty of.
Did you second my motion, Mr.?
I did. I second the motion.
Can I make a quick declaration before we take a vote?
Yes, you did.
I would like to state that I do not believe I have a conflict of interest as I vote on this number, only, I vote on this measure only as a member of this board and not as a named respondent in any of the lawsuits. However, I do concern on this board that has currently multiple lawsuits pending. And there are bills in this cycle to reflect those lawsuits. And I believe I can still vote on this measure in the interest of the public and doesn't present a conflict for me.
Well, I would ask Mr. Curry, based on whatever happens with this motion, walk us through disclosure by local government employees declaration.
Sure. It's rather simple. If you're not already covered by 1520, 1520 belts and suspenders, you can simply identify a transaction in which you may have a personal interest and what your personal interest is. In this case, your personal interest may be. In this case, your personal interest may be paying legal bills for a law firm that is performing on your behalf, i.e. Brag One. And that you can do so and make the, the decision as a group of three or more members and four supervisors, and that you're able to do so in a fair, fair, objective and way in the public interest. This is on the form that I placed before you. Code allows you to read it into the minutes and have the minutes reflect it or to fill it out in paper after the fact. It did highlight the fact that if, if you do do it on paper, you are supposed to mention it in the meeting and have that be in the minutes as well. So on the form that I handed out, if you look at the declaration, there are blanks there. The transaction is/was approving the AP. The nature of the personal interest was approving invoices for Walker Jones or Offit Kerman, I think is the name. And that you're a group of three or more, and you're going to take this vote fairly objectively in the public interest.
I had the invoice here, Offit Kerman, and as I stated, there is the invoices for Walker Jones, which I'm not a named individual in the program. Anyway, so I can go ahead and second that. We can just say this as we vote.
You say that.
Okay, well, I, I'm represented by Walker Jones and the county attorney and, and the deputy county attorney. So, and I guess the results of their efforts hopefully will prove my innocence in this, in these charges.
So the, the nature of your personal interest in this particular action would be the fact that you're approving bills for...
Yeah, we're approving the bills for Walker Jones, yeah, but not for Offit, whatever it is.
And the fact that you can take that action as a group of three or more board members and that in doing so, you can do it fairly objectively in the public interest.
Yeah, a member of a group of three or more members of the board supervisors certify that I was able to participate in the transaction fairly objectively in their public interest.
I'd like to make a declaration that the transaction was for the approval of the bills, including an invoice of $3,780 from Walker Jones and/or an invoice to Offit Kerman for $200 based on the nature of my personal interest being defended in the Brag One case, and that I am a member of a group of three or more members of the board supervisors of Rappahannock County, and that I certify that I was able to participate in the transaction fairly objectively in the public interest.
I don't know if you want to do this, or you can fill this out later and just say genuinely that you have a potential existence of interest in this being approving the bills and then fill the form later, or you can go through the process the rest of the time here.
So now we vote on approving the bills minus the bill to, the $200 bill to the Offit transaction as approving the AP, including Walker Jones.
Including Walker Jones.
Right.
But you should state publicly that you may have a personal interest. The rest will be unpaid.
Dr. Flores shall also orally disclose the existence of the interest during each meeting of a governmental or advisor or agency at which the transaction is discussed, and what this closure shall be recorded in the minutes of the meeting.
So if you're simply making that oral disclosure right now, it can be completed formally another time.
Oh, okay. This is mine, right?
Can be. So there's a motion and a second to pay the bills less the Offit, less the $200, which is Offit Kerman.
Okay. Is everybody finished?
Aye.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay.
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 Another item on the agenda is your contingency fund budget process. We've tracked this along the way. I have not transferred or come to you asking to transfer any of these dollars to the budget yes. As we do close the day of year, we'll learn whether these transfers need to happen, but it's important to keep track. So note of cordism. We don't have to transfer the funds that ultimately are savings in other budget funds. No one of our necessitates do that. Right. I told you the, the last meeting, there was a question of where we were with the debris reduction in Amistville, and I've told you by email that the vendors said that we were messed up and should be started shortly after Christmas. So I hope that will be started soon. It's my hope to be able to work through the RFP process for our solid waste services over the summer. Just wasn't able to get to that. We may still benefit from some savings, but just to make sure we have our bases covered, I'm asking you to reserve $20,000, which is the cost, our net cost for the debris reduction from the contingency in case we do need it later in the year. If you're willing to do that, I'm going to motion to that. I'll make a motion to do that. Second.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion paid.
All right, you can make your appointments. Quick appointment is for the agricultural and forestal district advisory committee. Brady's competing, Brady was less efficient than now.
He's got a big job.
Yeah. I noted previously that you had two remaining spots on this, and I thought they were split between just a landowner, a landowner, landowner involving forestal production or agricultural production. Looking closer at the data, you have all of the agricultural and forestal production slots filled, so we actually have two regular landowner positions available. Brady has submitted an application. Actually, while he works for the bank, does have a personal involvement in forestal production in West Virginia Tech for this sort of thing. So someone would like to point him out.
I'm making a motion to appoint Jason Brady to the agricultural district committee.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay.
Next is the library board. There are, there are two seats currently ended at the end of December. One is for Ms. Krebs, who states she desires for reappointment. One is for Ms. Stowe, who says she does not desire reappointment. The board has the option to make appointments or advertise the vacancy to see if there's broader interest. I also pointed out to the board, Code of Virginia 42-1-35 does allow the board to appoint one of their own or a county employee to this board if you so choose, whether it be in current, current vacancy, now may be an appropriate time, particularly given what we learned earlier or talked about earlier during the audit, that the library board has a significant amount of money that they'll be ready, working on investing.
Well, I'd like to go ahead and then point the county administrator to fill that spot. I think it's, needs attention, and I know, I know you've visited Mr. Curry, but I appreciate that he would sit on the floor. Make that important motion.
I'll second.
I'd be happy to do that, Mr. Board's Will.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay.
So there's, Ms. Krebs' term ended December 31, 2018. Board needs to decide whether they want to reappoint or go out and see if there are others interested, and if so, how would the county administration go about advertising the things?
My call on that, Mr. Chairman, is that, again, we should, we should try to advertise these and find if there are any other citizens in the community that may be interested either in filling the vacant position or let the board decide if we want to renew Ms. Krebs' or if there may be somebody else in the community that's interested in that position as well. So I, I, I think we should cast a vote out there for the next 30 days, come back in February, and see how many applicants we get, and make, make two choices.
That'd be my preference as well.
We can do that by consensus.
Yeah, and if, if by consensus you're interested, do you want to add to run the paper? I think we have some that we're going to...
However, we typically run, advertise openings on boards.
We'll do the serves, whatever, whatever we do. All right, next, next item on the agenda is appointment to the Rappahannock County recreational facilities authority. This is due to the resignation of Jim Wood, who's been on the committee authority board for perhaps 40 years.
Day one.
Since day one, yeah. And as board members made their call a month or two ago, had to pass a resolution affirming the membership of all of the members on the recreational facilities authority because your code states that you appoint members by resolution. So that being the case, if you have a resolution available, should you decide to make an appointment today, so make the appointment first and then, and then... You make the appointment via resolution, so we do have one applicant, Ms. Ritter. So if you want to make that, make that appointment, I can put it into this resolution, or we can advertise, do whatever the board wants to do.
I'd like to go ahead and make this nomination today, as you said, because they're a very busy organization, and so I know that they need opponents on deck. If no one is opposed to it, I'd like to go ahead and make the nomination. For Ms. Ritter.
So to them, and I would ask that you move approval of the resolution provided with Ms. Ritter's name being included in the blank. That blank being in the bottom left.
I don't think I have the right page.
All right, there it is.
Now therefore be it resolved that the board of supervisors hereby appoints the below individual to the RC, RFA board with the listed term expiration date for January 7th, 2019 is your appointment date, June 30th, 2021 is your expiration date for your term, and the rest of the appointment, the nomination is for Steph Ritter.
I second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion made and seconded.
Does she get a pay raise?
All those in favor, say aye.
Roll call, because it's a resolution.
Roll call. Mr. Curry.
Aye.
Ms. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Fenske.
Wasinski.
Mr. Wasinski also.
Sorry. Aye.
Mr. Perry.
Aye.
The next one is the fire level board.
And this is really just a report out. I know that as you recall, board members from each district will appoint individually. Wakefield is the only one remaining, although I understand Mr. Welch was just giving a name here recently to contact, and I guess if that contact goes well, then I have a...
He's already requested.
Yeah.
I'd like to put Benjamin Atkins.
Okay. And that doesn't have to come before a vote of the board, so Mr. Welch is pointing Mr. Benjamin Atkins.
I heard he was interested. I forgot to talk to you about that.
We will call.
We will, right?
Yes.
So I will not include that in the future on the agenda, but now it is full.
Next item is the committee.
Building committee.
Yeah, first one is the building.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Fraser wants me to report out here. We, the building committee met on December 17th. It was Mr. Fraser himself, Mr. Curry, Mr. Sullivan, and Mr. Alan Comp. Citizens are very concerned about the progress that the county is making on our buildings, and I'm pleased, I'm pleased to report that there are things happening now. I don't know if you saw the new courthouse ramp that we have, the handicap access ramp on the side of the courthouse that was, that was completed. New generator in Amistville, there, I guess, at the, at the transfer station, the repair, repair, right, keep the pumps running for raw. We are looking at some sketches, reviewing some sketches that are being done for some renovations inside the social services building, and we'll need a permit and have to hire a contractor for that. We haven't been by the county administration offices lately. There's some new signage in place there, and we're now working on signage for the sheriff's office and the area behind the courthouse there to improve access and identity. County, again, county administration building, signage, motion sensors for lights. We have, we're starting to receive responses to our RFP for space planning and engineering services. I believe we've got one here.
Contracts, contracts resulting from the RFP. So I do have one in from SRP.
Yeah, I think the idea is, once we get a couple, a few more over the next 30 days, you can bring those back to the board for...
I suspect we'll have a building committee meeting between now and then, that I can share an update, and then at the February meeting, I'll be asking the board to authorize for the chair or myself to execute.
Yeah, we have a meeting on, we're leaving today. The meeting committee will meet again. Some of what we're going to learn, I think, in this process will allow us to do a five-year capital improvement plan, if we start to look at something, some items along that line. We're also looking at electrical bids for the former county administrator, the older building here, gingerbread house. We got one bid for around $10,000. We thought it was pretty expensive, so I think we're looking for other bids. Let's see, Chantel has installed internet and voice-over internet protocol phones in the county buildings, and you're, you're working on backhaul information.
And not installed, that's right. And I'm just working on it. Today, there was a delay in the response here over the last two weeks. There was a death in the family from the salesperson. The most recent promise is this week.
Yeah, we did some older radiation in the registrar's office. We're looking at moving records or what we can do about records that have been stored in some of our buildings, continuing to look at that. And Larry Strachford no longer wants to be our HVAC provider, but we're looking at other vendors. And there was a discussion about boxwoods and some of the boxwood disease here in the Washington, and hopefully it won't affect some of our landscaping around the courthouse. That'll be looked at in a greater scale when we get, when we bring on landscape work to town. And our next meeting is set for a week from today, 9:30 on the 14th, in the county administrator's office downstairs in the visitors' section. Mr. Fisher, have you seen anything there? Mr. Fraser, can you cover the jury?
I think it's good.
I did wonder for that boxwood blade, is there an inoculant for it, like for some of these other tree diseases?
No. They gotta remove them before it's... No, they gotta remove them before it spreads. What happens is, we got in a long discussion about this. What happens is if you go and brush up against them, there'll be a disease, it will get on your clothing. And if you go home or you go to another location or if you come to the courthouse and you rub up against the boxwoods, that's how, that's how it gets transferred. It's not, it's not through the air.
It's not great for us to be the central hub to receive and dispense all around the county.
Although our boxes are not, have not been affected around here.
Okay, the next item is the power of the location. Passable.
We have, I'm sorry.
No, everybody.
We have not met Mr. Chairman, and I don't have an update unless Mr. Curry has any new timelines for CWS.
Last I heard, they are getting their last permits and ready to start construction.
Very good. Thank you so much. Did you have anything, Mr. Curry?
No, other than, I think that we'd just like to maybe always keep in the background that we may have to have some sort of repeater out in the western area, near Castleton, Scrabble area. You know, keep in mind, we probably can't use red, or maybe something similar.
Just to remind everybody that I am waiting on budgetary coverage from Harris for 800 megahertz transmitter science. And that's when you, if you look at coverage spots from that, you think that they're not adequate. That's when you might decide to go to a three-site system instead of a two-site system.
Right. Next item, broadband.
Very quickly, Mr. Chairman, Broadband Committee met on December 15. Prior to that, Mr. Curry and I met with Mr. Shoemaker of P-Bonk Broadband. We met with him on the 13th, just to get a better handle on understanding what kind of technology improvements he's bringing into the county and what some of his challenges are. He also attended the meeting on the 15th. We had full committee participation. Mrs. Bond is here today, she's our new member. Thank you, Margaret. We had, it was, it was pretty much a catch-up meeting, catching the committee up on some of the meetings that Mr. Curry and I have had, that have been reflected in the minutes here, our meetings with OmniPoint and HallPoints. This Friday, Mr. Curry and I are meeting with Rappahannock County Co-op to learn about the rural broadband programs. They may have, they may be rolling out or they have in their plans. And we also have a meeting of Century Link, in which we're probably also going to talk about landlines too, I would imagine. So we're meeting both groups and Culpeper this Friday. And then we have our next Broadband Committee meeting, I think it's set for the 24th, I think, where that Thursday is that week. Probably the biggest takeaway is we had a gentleman from Madison County with a company called Madison Gigabit. He's gotten, he, he is in partnership with the county government in Madison County to provide broadband service, you know, throughout Madison. And he had a lot of good input about everything from technology to funding. And we may end up seeing more of him at our meetings in the future.
And he partnered with Madison in the DTI grant.
Right, right. The Virginia Telecom Initiative, great, yeah. So the next meeting of Broadband Committee, I think, I know that the committee is going to be trying to set specific goals that we're going to try to achieve to bring more broadband service into the county. And we'll bring those goals back to the board, hopefully enough that we're needing, and discuss those. And based on that, we formulate some action plans to go forward and talk to some providers or put together an RFP or discuss whether or not we need to, you know, further investigate public private partnerships sometime. So we're making progress, Mr. Chairman. We're continuing to meet, continuing to learn, and continuing to work.
Okay, the next time, the Rules Committee. With Mr. Curry and myself.
Now, Mr. Chairman, as you know, the last time we met is, I guess, in the winter, and we were supposed to have some of the discussion that you and I agreed on and other members of the public that were there, Mr. Curry and members of the UCL. Mr. Goff was supposed to put that together in a form of some draft language, and he didn't contact us that he had got that together, so we didn't meet.
And I think, as I was talking to Mr. Goff about this, he reminded me that the Rules Committee wanted to see it one last time before getting it to the board. So I guess it would be appropriate for the Rules Committee to set a meeting mid-month. If Mr. Goff can get that done, then you can vet it. And then on the next board agenda, have what may be final for the Rules Committee. And then if the board thinks it's appropriate, can authorize me to advertise a public hearing for that board adjournment, which would then be the subsequent month of March.
Right, but we haven't seen it yet.
Right, that's what I'm saying. So in January, the Rules Committee can see what comes out of Mr. Goff, massage it as necessary, refer a specific document to the board to be reviewed at the February meeting, at which point in time the board at the February meeting could authorize me to advertise a public hearing for the March meeting.
But that sounds in excess.
I also ask Mr. Chairman, when the Rules Committee does meet, maybe you ought to take a look at the meeting and your structure, as you all talked about, looking at the meeting as...
Definitely.
All right, well, let's get this covered.
Well, I think the meeting structure, they could probably come on the heels and maybe we're going to do the Finance Committee and then do, then do the, the expedite, the consent agenda. If we can get all that together, maybe about, like, 25, 25, something like that.
Like government planning.
We don't want to do things too fast here.
You might regret your decision.
Then you'd have nothing to do. That might be a catchy, too, 25, 25.
I'm hurting over the way here.
I'm already behind.
Oh, next item is the Standards and Finance Committee. We still, I didn't have a couple of contacts.
Okay, Finance Committee. The, Mr. Wazinski and myself met and briefly discussed that. I sent him a draft where I had rearranged the original resolution a little bit. And we both agreed that I left out a very important comment. And comments aren't important. So I did correct that, but I did send him the corrected draft. So I think we're going to get that out and then probably meet again. And if we like that, and maybe write on that a little bit, work on it, we'll send that out to the rest of the board, maybe have that on the agenda for the February meeting, and see where we can go from there, if that's all right with the rest of the board. But I think we are making headway on that.
Anything else?
That's, that's all we got on that so far. And we are making headway. Comments aren't important.
Next item, landline and funding service.
Especially the Oscar comment.
Mr. Curry, right.
Very quickly, I'm not sure how much longer it would be appropriate to keep this landline conversation on the agenda. Board can let you know. In the month of December, we had seven contacts. All were resolved rather quickly by the companies. One was a repeat from some time ago. Remember, Centrum Link had a previous local manager, and I was referred to that person, we thought it was done. I found out it wasn't. This recent, the new manager took care of it right away. We continue to have very good feedback from both companies relative to fixing issues when they're brought to our attention. So continue to contact the telephone companies and then contact us to drive it home.
Okay, the Centrum County Administrators Report.
Mr. Curry. This item was placed on the agenda to request of Ms. Smith, included a copy of the report in the new packet, and effort to review it anyway the board would like to. Stay ready to discuss.
I, I requested this item be added to the agenda, Mr. Chairman, because we had discussed it when Brenda left, but then it had sort of fallen by the wayside. And we had never gone back and reviewed it item by item and decided, you know, whether we wanted to undertake any of the measures she proposed. And when I started to review it, I realized we'd actually accomplished some of the things that she proposed. And, but there was still quite a bit of meat on the bone that maybe we should go back and, and do a work session, you know, whenever would work for other board members, to be able to review these recommendations and see if there are items that we want to carry forward and undertake as a board.
Yeah, and I think there are several items on the list for which staff has been marching forward but haven't really reported out to the public or the board. For example, personnel policy manual, things that are moving along in draft form that, that we can update the board and the public at such a meeting or time. If that's the desire, or I can prepare a report, get written for it, depending on how many board times it goes to me.
I, I also went through this, Ms. Smith, I think it was a good, a very good idea to review this. A lot of this has been accomplished, or we've formed things such as the Building Task Force to address some of the issues as it relates to our infrastructure. And I think, I don't know, maybe rather than a work session, maybe we can get a report from the county administrator initially and then decide if we, there are certain things we want to, we want to work on. I don't know, bring in all of this, because a lot of this is, a lot of this has really been, been done. It's just great news. I don't know. I defer to you.
Well, I'm happy to accomplish it in a regular meeting, especially if it's a meeting like this, where we would have time to undertake it, maybe in the evening session next month. If the agenda looks like it will accommodate, it would probably be an appropriate time to do it. But I think it would be nice to both be able to maybe cross some items off the list and also set some priorities moving forward.
So what I'll do is I'll go through and basically catalog items into the, whether they're done or in process, whether there's any schedule already in place. And that may help focus your, be able to recognize what is done, which is always nice to do.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I am, I'm remiss that I allowed a few items that were equally important but probably contentious to allow my attention to be averted. But I believe we should have changed the order of the agendas somewhat earlier and made L2 much more important and under the rate, under the rate of process here. I believe with the family of Mr. Huff here, we should have made it much more important and earlier on in the process. And I wish that the board would now entertain changing the agenda and move up the, the resolution for Mr. Huff and place it on the agenda now for the next round of business, the double booth board. And I apologize, so.
I will certainly agree. And I didn't realize that they were going to be here today, and I thought they were going to present it another day, so.
Well, I, I think we really should present it as well at the ceremony, but I think that we should do it today as well. And I am remiss that I didn't pay attention.
Give me a motion of second half.
I'll put that in for, a motion to amend the agenda, sir.
Page and second. All those in favor say aye.
One of the board members would like to read this, or I can, or...
Do you mind reading this, sir?
So we have a resolution of appreciation and condolence to the families of Frank Huff. And it reads, "Whereas Frank Huff served the citizens of Rappahannock County for nearly his entire life, dedicating countless hours to the Flint Hill Volunteer Fire and Rescue Company. And whereas during his tenure serving Flint Hill Volunteer Fire and Rescue, he served in nearly every office to include chief for more than 20 years and president. And whereas his dedicated service to the fire and rescue community included serving as an AMT instructor, training many of those who have served and continue to serve the community. And whereas he served as a deputy emergency services coordinator assisting the Rappahannock County Government to both coordinate emergency services and emergency management. And whereas the members of the Rappahannock County Board of Supervisors will always consider this an integral part of the fire and rescue services provided to the citizens and visitors of the county. Now, therefore, be it resolved that Rappahannock County Board of Supervisors extends its sincerest appreciation of the lifelong dedication to the community shared selfishly by Chief Huff and offers deepest condolences to his surviving family. And be it further resolved that this resolution be spread across the minutes of the Rappahannock County Board of Supervisors for all citizens to reflect upon the service and accomplishments of this dedicated citizen. And that a copy of this resolution be presented to the family of Frank Huff by the Rappahannock County Board of Supervisors adopted this day, 7th day of January 2019. The document is prepared to be signed by all the board members. And once that's done, we'll present it to you personally.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Which is retained on the agenda with limited scope. Is that right? K3 was retained on the agenda with limited scope.
Thanks. Sorry, I didn't hear that earlier, Mr. Wazinski.
With respect to court dates related to K3, I can say that with respect to Woman versus Wazinski, there is a court date on January 22 at 10:80 in the bill.
The Atkins versus Rappahannock and Capielli also has a court date on the 22nd. And the preliminary matters.
And this bill?
And this bill.
On January 22?
January 22. Are you aware of any other ones to go?
Not right now.
Back to you.
Thanks.
And then, I don't know if there's any bill discussion that is required. That was the other half of the...
I don't have any questions at the same time.
I think we largely covered that when we approved the accounts payable. So I would just request that we keep this as our current agenda item, so that we can stay on the same page, please.
I just don't think I should have to read it out in the newspaper.
Well, what I can do is include in the agenda any dates that I'm aware of.
But you have to be made aware of.
That's correct.
Yeah, maybe I make the board know those things. When there's an upcoming hearing at which there's going to be something substantive discussed, then I'll make sure everybody knows about it by email.
That includes the entire board?
Yeah, anything substantive, that's right. If there's some argument, or the judge is going to hear arguments, or if there's going to be a trial or something like that, they'll know well in advance of when that is. And even, even a scheduling hearing, if, to the extent that it's going to be, there's an actual date scheduled, I'll let everybody know that as well.
Several times I did, and that's, that's been my problem, I see.
Yeah, that's already been decided, partners.
I think my, my only request would be that the word substantive requires a decision on your part, Mr. Goff. And I would rather that you let us know all the dates... And I would rather that you let us know all the dates that you're aware of, and then we can decide if there's something.
Well, I'd be glad to do that, Mr. Smith, but I didn't want to drag people into court last time for when we knew there was a possibility that we couldn't set a date, even though we were coming to court.
Okay, well, if you'll keep us informed as best you can.
I would.
That would be most appreciated.
I think that brings us to H2. Patrick Moni has been enthralled in our meeting thus far. He is here from the Regional Commission, who worked to update and prepare a new Regional Hazard Mitigation Plan, and I'll let Patrick give a little introduction there.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, county administrator. What you had, I saw in the memo that Mr. Curry simply provided, is what I draw your attention to is the executive summary of this 2018 Rappahannock Rapid Emergency and Hazard Mitigation Plan. That's a four-page, high-level overview of what hazard mitigation is and what the process that we followed with this plan update, what the process was that we followed. This is the third update of this plan. It's a federally made of the plan by FEMA. The main gist of participation is being eligible for various grant programs to mitigate or natural hazards. In most of our region, that flood is the main risk, the main hazard risk that we deal with. But this plan also includes, and covers drought, hurricanes, severe thunderstorms, tornadoes, earthquakes, which the last thing that we did in this plan was a big topic of discussion. And so what I draw your attention to, as I said, is the executive summary, and then, as Mr. Curry said, in Appendix A, the memo, there are 11 mitigation strategies that have been identified by Rappahannock County. This process regionally began, the update process began late March of 2017. It was about a 12 to 14 point update process. Our staff at the Regional Commission went through, reviewed data, did some modeling, updated vulnerability estimates, the meat of what turned into about a 120-page plan. We went through those updates in coordination with the Regional Hazard Mitigation State Labor Committee. And for Rappahannock County, originally that was the previous emergency manager, also worked with the volunteer deputy emergency manager at the time, and then when Mr. Williams came on, had meetings with him, and then so he led this also, and Mr. Curry provided some feedback just in November. So if you look at those 11 strategies, nine of them had been in the previous plan, and then the two that were additions were number 1011, coordinated and assisted exercise and scenario planning with other jurisdictions. And then one thing that FEMA and the Virginia Department of Emergency Management requested that we ask localities or sort of suggest localities include this time around was to coordinate a review of the hazard mitigation plan once adopted with your other plans locally, which would be your work separations plan, your comprehensive plan, if you have a capital improvements program plan, just to ensure that there's integration of all those plans moving forward. The other piece that I would say, and this is on page 99 of the full plan, as part of the multi-jurisdictional plan, we take all of the hazards and then rank them on a regional level. So as not to include a locality from being able to say, well, you know, we've ranked, and if you look on the executive summaries, page three of the executive summary gives you a ranking of what were high-risk, moderate-risk, and low-risk hazards for the region. Participating localities can then take those and say, well, in some cases, we have a natural hazard that poses more of a risk to our jurisdiction. And so in the case of Rappahannock County, wildfires listed as a moderate risk for the region, and when I say the region, it's Rappahannock, Fauquier County, Pulp, Pepper, Orange, and Madison, and then the towns there. And so Rappahannock County says that Red's wildfire is a high-risk hazard, and that is due to proximity with Shando National Park, and I think just the more open nature of the landscape here. So that's something that's required when you participate in a multi-jurisdictional plan, that each locality does have the ability to then label one of those moderate or low-risk hazards as a higher risk, in this case, we're not going to do that. So what we've done, it's, like I said, about a year-long process. We turned in a plan and over the summer to FEMA for them to approve, review, and approve, and they did that just before Thanksgiving and said, once you have adoptions, then you'll have, this plan will be eligible again to other grant programs, and also just to integrate it with the other plans, like I said. As I did say, I appreciate the work of county staff. From my perspective, the Regional Commission would try to do most of the work so as not to put that work back out to locality to do that, but there is input that we require from the locality, and then we'll say that even with turnover or emergency management that information from Rappahannock County to this process. I'm happy to answer questions. I don't want to go into too many details, but I certainly can't afford questions.
I would just ask, where the rubber meets the road here is that if we want to have an opportunity to receive certain federal funds, we must have this plan adopted locally. And we're very thankful to have the region to do this for, so we're not each doing our own plan. Our risks are largely regional, and so it really works out well in a situation like this.
Where do we have to adopt it?
Right now. You don't have to.
No, there's, I mean, there's not a timeframe. Until you do adopt it, you wouldn't be eligible for some of those grant monies, but that's a more chance, I would imagine, if you wanted to consider for a month.
If we've got to adopt it now, why didn't we have it last month?
You don't need to adopt it now. It was approved in November, and then I transmitted just after Thanksgiving to our locality contacts. I think it was just one that didn't have enough time to get on the December agenda.
Who approved it last month?
So far, we have had approvals from Madison County, Fauquier County, Town of Gordonsville, and then last Thursday at the Town of Madison, the other, or different jurisdictions.
Did the commission?
The commission also approved it there December meeting, Regional Commission.
Well, we should have had it last month to look at.
I had it in my office, provided some comments that they responded to and fixed a couple of issues. And certainly I've provided a resolution in the packet for the board to take action at this meeting. If you'd rather hold it over till the next meeting and read through the report and identify any other potential issues, that's, that's fine.
That's what I'd like to do. I mean, if I've got to approve it today, I'd like to have it last month.
I know, but wasn't it in our board docs?
Yeah, it is. So you.
So we've had to change anything back?
Just a couple of days. We haven't had it in a month. Did we? We had it in a month?
Hey, I just noticed it was in board docs for the last two days. It's been on.
It's not a long document.
It's been on the Regional Commission's website for a couple of months, I guess.
I mean, throughout the process, we've had it on our website and put it out in our newsletter and other places to transmit, but if it is, if it is the board's, I would hold it for a month, then.
Believe I updated the board in my weekly communication, and it existed and was available on the Regional Commission's website, but I don't think there'll be any issue with not approving the resolution tonight. If there were some funding reason why it was very important that it be approved very quickly, you could have called special needs.
I just have a couple of questions, and it has to do with the spreadsheet or the chart that's, you know, Exhibit A, I guess it's page 15, talks specifically about accounting. There's a couple of things in 2012, and I guess this is Patrick, not, not so much to you, maybe it is, but it is Mr. Curry, talking about project numbers eight and nine back in 2012 involving a number of generators, emergency generators, and emergency shelters, and schools, and fire departments. You know, we've got a pretty active building task force right now that's looking at a lot of these things. I mean, is this something that we can, that the task force can look at, or if you're developing your capital improvement plan, or have we achieved most of this already?
Well, some of it, I think, may have been achieved. Yes, we can look at it, and this report really is a, it provides benefit in a couple of different ways. One, if we get these items in this chart and appropriate grants come along, then we can apply for grants for these projects.
Got it.
And be more successful. And it may not be as high on, as high on your list as fixing this building, but it's important to have it in the plan going forward. So while it may not show in your CIP, having it here may have, give you access to funds. But it also helps you focus on what emergency management standpoint, hazard mitigation standpoint, what is it for?
What we, what may be appropriate is when we discuss these things in the Public Safety Committee, before we apply, it might, it might be worth a while to get also the endorsement from the Building Committee and the board who knows we apply to these rates, because we have talked about the generators in the Public Safety Committee.
You've got some good grant writers there in the committee, too.
Well, I think this was, this is one of the pieces that we've been waiting to follow in place to pursue some of the opportunities that are available. I don't see any harm in waiting it for February. It's something that won't be the last stand on deck.
No, I mean, there's no, it's not a race to the finish, and certainly that, need a month to deliberate a treaty, that, that's perfectly fine.
I'm starting to have a problem with that.
Now?
I don't either, but if other board members, I mean, would it be for the purpose of reading it in greater detail, or?
I'd like to get some more feedback from the folks in the Public Safety Committee and make sure their needs are being met with these documents.
Can you be able to meet in January, you think?
We'll have a quarterly meeting, and even if we don't need, I can get these, these out to get some feedback.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay.
And I might offer, if there is a meeting, a Public Safety Committee meeting, or a Building Committee meeting where it might come up, I'm happy to return for that as well.
I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
There's some of the same books at the Fire League meeting, and that will be one in January. Most of the same book show up for that.
Did you have a date that answered any?
I did, let's see. I think we already have one, seven.
For which committee?
Fire League.
Building Committee is 14.
Yeah, I can't see that being the, now that I'm hearing.
We meet the 23rd, probably, David.
23rd?
21st or 22nd. Wait, no, I'm sorry, that's the, that's the day we need for, that's the review deadline.
I can have it on the board docs anyway, so I can follow Mr. Curry.
Maybe the 23rd or 24th. I'll get with you on that.
And if there are questions in between, feel free to email me or give me a call from that, and to answer anything that comes up between us, we review.
Please do.
Is that it? We're down to three? Thank you. Thank you. We pulled L2 up, so that brings us to L3. Conflict of Interest Act disclosure statement form from the library board members. QUoia Section 2.2, 3115B provides the opportunity to the board supervisors to require certain boards that you form to file the annual financial disclosure statement. It's a smaller form than what board members do, the statement of economic interest. Certain groups must file that form, such as authorities who can issue bonds greater than $10,000, which would be the Water and Sewer Authority and the Park Authority.
Planning Commission, I think, has to do real estate.
Planning Commission has to do real estate. So you have a rec authority who has an annual budget of $50,000 or something, they must file this form, financial disclosure statement. You have the library board, who controls an annual budget around $250,000 or more, and has a fund balance of around $1.7 million. They don't have to file that, unless the board so designates it. And you can designate simply in the form of a motion, if you think that's important. And, and this is simply to identify to the public what their personal interests are. So if you have a board member, and I'm not intimately familiar with them all, and I will be, I'm sure, now that I am a board member, like I said, I don't have to fill out this kind for this purpose. If I have a, a construction business, it's important for the public to know that I have a construction business. At the same time, we're discussing how are we going to expand the library. And this disclosure statement is really all about that, making sure the public knows what your personal interests are and put in writing before you set off on the year's tasks. And you do that every year, as you know, I just handed up a look set to a number of you today. Forms become active on January 1, and must be completed by February 1 of each year. So my recommendation is for the board to, by motion, require the library board members to file a financial disclosure statement to 2.2, 3115B.
I think that would be a good idea. I'll make that, I'll make the motion for that.
I mean, this is a measure for transparency and also for the protection of those individuals themselves. So it seems like a logical thing, obviously.
I think so. Now, there will be one more. And I think last year, the year before, there was a question of whether they had to, and Mr. Goff ran down the code and said, no, you don't have to do it. They only have to do it if the local government so designates.
So they were going to?
No, they didn't. I think somebody asked them to do it, and they said, we don't have to do this.
Oh, okay, I thought they were going to.
Not that I'm worried.
This is to require?
The library board to file financial disclosure statements annually.
And this is separate from library board?
Yes.
But it's a short form, as you said, right? More or less?
Correct. Much shorter than the form.
I'll second it.
Well, if you make a statement, all of the favors, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, aye? Well, continue. Long range financial plan.
We remove that.
Yes.
I'll touch on that. Try to keep this quick, and try not to cover anything we talked about in my county administrator update. Today is January 7th. I've now been here one year, four days, so this is my first repeat meeting, although the last January meeting, I wasn't sound by and having just traveled from the other side of the planet.
So what do you want, a cake?
Yeah.
Paradise.
The budget process is underway. I've copied the board, my memos to internal and external budget request orders, as it were. We're starting to get responses back from external agencies with their requests, as well as the documentation that I requested that they provided, including things like, why do you really need the money, and what happens if you don't get it? So hopefully people are thinking a little bit about the importance of the citizen tax dollars that are being invested, and how they can leverage it through their human multipliers to do good things in public. Along the same lines of capital improvement plan, we talked about earlier, I have asked internal and the schools to provide me with projects that they foresee in the next five years that would need a $25,000 threshold for capital, slower than I've used historically, but, or smaller than I've worked historically. And with that, we'll pull in all the projects, ask them to estimate when in the five-year horizon they may think they would come along, and then we can plan that all out together. We'll look at that together with our debt schedule. From FY '19 to FY '20, we've dropped one bond, so there's one payment no longer going to be in our budget. That's great. So what fills that void? Is it, is it capital items, debt service, or operating? And then in the next couple of years, there'll be two more bonds that we pay off between now and 2025, at which point you'll have no bonds. So one way to look at things is to basically sequester those debt service dollars into a category of their own and dedicate those to these capital needs, such as these buildings, buses, trains, whatever. So you can keep your total expenditures level, but pull but pull that section of the budget that's been going to debt service for years and reassign it towards these capital projects, either through a pay-go process or to support future debt services, depending on the type of projects that you want. So I'm hopeful that through collection of these projects, the board will be able to see where we are, what our liabilities are, and what our opportunity for revenue is. So that's coming your way. I mentioned earlier the brush pile. I'm told we're next on the list, and it should happen anytime now. I'm hoping there are more timely than should tell. Comp Plan, Mr. Parrish mentioned. There truly are very few small items left. Working with Patrick and his folks to help us get the right map numbers on the right pages. There are to be done on the graphics and change a couple of minor things in the narrative. And it should be ready for the Planning Commission for their next meeting to review and determine whether it's a form acceptable to go to public hearing at the Planning Commission. They would then review the citizen input, make any changes or recommend any changes they think are appropriate, and pass it on to the board to review. The board will then review that document and determine what form you desire to be sent out for public hearing and do the same thing. So over the next several months, there should be a few public hearings on the Comp Plan, and then we'll start the process all over again, because we shouldn't wait 15 years. Still waiting to hear back from Harris, 800 megahertz sites. I did get some feedback from them, that they'll provide a couple alternatives on the design. And they are suggesting a two-site system that we could stand alone from the regional system if we lost our connection to the regional system. So we would have not very good coverage all over the county if we lost our connection, but it'd be better than if we lost our connection to Fauquier and Culpeper today with no towers. So there's some redundancy that they're working in. Of course, there are a lot of technicals attached to that that they're running down, and they impact our sites. So Sperryville, for example, we just need a very small spot for VHF only. But if we went to an 800 megahertz, they need to figure out a space for a building. They're working through all that, and I'm working with them and the tower companies to try and get that lined up so we can have a good proposal that's based on the master contract. Those will be inputs to the CIP, and the board will have to rank where that need is relative to everything else, such as this building. RFP for auditors will be out this week. One of the things I need to do for that is advertise in the papers. I'm working on it. We've talked over the last year about probably time to see a different auditor would work for us. We think we've got our financial house in pretty good order so that somebody can step in and pick up if a new firm is appropriate. Even if RFC doesn't, it'd be my recommendation to switch to a different office just to have fresh eyes. And lastly, I was asked to participate in the Legislative Fiscal Impact Review Process, where different local government representatives perform a fiscal impact review on general assembly actions. So in kind of real time during the process, the general assembly says they're going to change some code. What does that mean locally? I've agreed to do that, so I'll work with DHCD to review draft legislation and come up with some suggestions on what the financial impact would be, just as a local representative for a small government. And with that, I'll take any questions you have.
That just for, like, a reading or a statement?
Just a statement.
Mr. Curry, is there, are we starting to feel any effects at all of the federal shutdown? Is there any effect to the locality that's currently on here? Social services?
Yeah, I've done, I'm not, I've not been native aware of impacts to the county government. I'm sure many of our citizens are, given our proximity.
Any federal programs that aren't getting funded or anything like that?
Not that I'm aware of, but that doesn't mean it's not happening.
Yeah, but you're not aware of anything yet.
Right, no, no.
Okay, next item is the letter to D9.
Yeah, it's just information correspondence. The board is well aware, you voted to approve the resolution requesting the designate of roads that have been moved through truck. And I've just included the letter and the attachments that were sent to the public's benefit. After that, you can see Comcast, again, has changed programming. And then I've also included a letter from the Virginia Department of Environmental Quality notifying the county that our regional water supply plan is approved. Every five years, I believe, at least, it'd be updated. We met with DEQ, county representatives and town representatives several months back, worked through a few issues, and they've sent us their approval letter. Next, Ms. Smith asked if I could gather some information on living with coyotes. I have read on local social media that they're around. I talked to our gang-worn Officer Bostick, and he said, they've always been here, they just kind of move around a little bit. So different people become exposed and think it's new, but the, one person's joy is somebody else's trepidation as the pack moves from one place to another. This trifold in the attachment, in the packet, as well as the website, are very good resources to help property owners know what to do. And it basically goes into a hint of advice that they're good and bad. And they take care of a lot of nuisance, but they're nuisance themselves. And if you're like a lamb farmer or something like that, then they're probably not on your list.
And I've been looking, too, online at a lot of other, at a lot of other rural counties in Virginia that are struggling with the line between agriculture and the way coyotes can just devastate livestock.
Yeah.
So I might continue just to further research them and see how their handling is. Wow.
That's the best caliber to use on.
Well, it is ongoing, continuous, open season on coyotes.
Open season, don't need a license. Go get them. Now, hopefully the persons whose property you're hunting on knows you do.
You have to be out there to shoot them. That's the problem.
And they're typically nocturnal, and if you see them during the day, it isn't necessarily rabies, but...
That can probably run population. And so even if you shoot a few, they'll come up to that level. And what you don't want to do is shoot the alpha male, because he controls his particular herd, if you want to call it that. And without him, then, then they really expand.
Okay.
So...
So some good information in the packet and on the DJI website.
If you really want to get them, you take a kitchen sponge, cut it in half, soak it in bacon grease, and you throw it out on their path. And they, unlike a dog, they'll pick it up, bite it, spit it back out. They, they're in a hurry, they just follow the whole damn thing. That expands, that plugs up the whole system, and it kills them.
Oh, my gosh.
Remind me not to eat any kitchen sponges.
Note to self. Be careful.
What, if they break the whole of the diet?
Yeah. The next item is also a request by Ms. Smith and is regarding invasive species we heard from the park superintendent, Emerald Ashbore. The Department of Forestry has a good website that lists a number of insect and plant invasives. And they also link to, who knows if these things exist, the Emerald Ashbore Information Network. So it's a whole website, all about tracking Emerald Ashbore. And there's GIS that shows you who's been most affected and a whole bunch of information on that. Generally, don't pick up firewood and move it somewhere else. And that, you know, that is the huge takeaway. But not only Emerald Ashbore, but the DOF has a page dedicated to all different kinds of invasives, which, this information for people to review when you're not reviewing everything else. Next, there is your monthly building permit report. Not the $2 million we had last month, a little bit less. Then after that is your zoning administrator report and DDA report, which Mr. Nesbit referred to a little earlier. And after that is Q1.
Is that a drawing?
Yes.
You want me to draw it?
What's that?
Motive, lady, climate. All the favorites say aye.
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 Have a good month.